Welcome to today's city council meeting, Monday, July twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey. District two, Councilmember Vera.
Yeah.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
District three, Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand up for the invocation by Tim Gianosa, Big Valley Grace Community Church. I believe he is here. And then followed by the pledge of allegiance. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you that we get to live in a great city like we do. Thank you for the men and women who serve us faithfully. What is a meet today is the meet with the community that we live in, give them great wisdom, give them knowledge, give them expertise. They pursue peace and patience when they need it. Father, may they always do what is best for the community. Well, we thank you. Thank you for this place and the sacrifices that are being paid or the service. All of this. Amen.
Ready to begin. I pledge this to the flag of the United States of America, due to our republic for which it stands, a nation under God. It is a republic of all.
Today, we have one presentation, one service award, and we have a overview by Bertolati. And we'll begin with the National Health Center Week proclamation. If we can have the entire city council, please go back up to the uh, where Miss uh, yeah, that will be. How you doing? Yes, everybody go up. The entire council. Everybody be paid. We, we have a new setup here, which will probably change, but for now. Welcome, everyone. Recognizing August fourth as National Health Center Week. Whereas every August, National Health Center Week, NHCW, is celebrated in an effort to increase awareness of America's one thousand four hundred community health centers. And whereas NHCW provides the opportunity to highlight the commitment and the passion of community health center staff, board members and supporters who make it possible to provide quality, comprehensive healthcare services to more than through thirty one point five million patients across nearly fifteen thousand communities. And whereas in two thousand and twenty four, theme of NHCW is powering communities through caring connections. And whereas this theme has chosen it in an effort to focus on empowering communities by connecting them with health centers and elected officials from all levels of government. Whereas community health centers serve a beacon of strength, services, and care in their communities. And whereas they offer support and compassion in moments of pain, loss, and as well a hope and a vision for the future and moment triumph. Now therefore be it resolved, I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Sirius, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Brett Silveira, Councilmember James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Daniel A. Martinez do hereby proclaim August fourth through the tenth, two thousand and twenty four, as National Health Center Week. Congratulations. If you would like to make a couple of comments. And we'll probably take a photo. I know it's a little awkward, but we'll take a photo like this.
Thank you so much. Like you said, powering communities through, through deep community connections. We're very happy to serve the serious community with three medical health centers and one dental clinic. And we want to continue to serve. And let's celebrate National Health Center Week during that week and come out to the clinics and celebrate with us. So thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, everyone, for your patience. Moving on to service award for John Federick, Information Technology Manager. This will be presented by City Manager Doug Dunford.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to say thank you to John in numerous ways, but just to give you some of his background. He started with the city of series back April fifth, nineteen ninety nine. If you remember, that was just before Y two K was supposed to hit. And so he got hit because started cutting his teeth here in series at that time. He is promoted to the Information Technology Manager on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty two. And from there, he moved forward and kept us running forward, kept the internet up. And so we're not suffering some of the problems that we've seen recently in the days regarding the airlines and everything. I'd like to thank John for being through, working with the government through the rough times, the easy times, as well as been through a couple of recessions, some other fat times. Uh, he stepped up and has agreed to take on additional challenges in the IT department recently. He's going to be taking over the copier contract, doing a RFP for the copiers. He's taking on the website and making sure that's up to date and his teammates. Uh, he's also doing inventory of poly equipment. So we can start putting together the, the citywide placement of years, like every five to six years. So we're staying up to date on everything. And he's going to be doing more department outreach for all the other departments to make sure they're staying current with everything that they need to and keeping us out of trouble. So again, I'd like to say thank you for John for twenty five years of service. But dedicated.
Twenty five years.
Sure. I've seen a lot of changes in my time, starting here before Y two K, before the city had a website, before anyone had email. When every department did their own thing and we couldn't even share documents across the parking lot. It's been an interesting journey, and I thank the whole team for allowing me to grow along with the city of series.
Congratulations. Next, we'll have Tony. She will take care of this agreement overview. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, I'm here to do a brief overview of the Bertolati franchise agreement. Next slide. As the exclusive franchise hauler, Bertolati is the only approved hauler for that is authorized to collect and transfer solid waste recycling and organic material in the city of series. This includes residential, commercial, industrial, educational, city facilities, and all other customers within the city limits. They also offer drop box services for commercial, for commercial businesses. However, that's arranged through Bertolati and not through the city. It does not prevent customers from self hauling their waste or their organic material directly to the facility. Or does it apply to landscape maintenance contractors that are hauling their, their trimmings from the worksite? And additionally, it's important to note that every customer, business, residential, entity that's occupying a parcel within the city limits must subscribe to garbage service. So the agreement is for eight years with the most recent revision being, having been approved in August of two thousand and twenty one. Contract is then further extended an additional two years on every other year basis. And this Bertolati of the city provides um, in writing that their intention is not to extend the contract. Bertolati retains eighty nine point five percent of the, of the revenues from service charges, while the city keeps the remaining ten point five percent. Bertolati also pays the city on an annual basis, one third of all of the charges for billing services. And those are costs for mail printing, postage, and whatnot. Next slide. Each of the three way streams are delivered and processed at different facilities. And the recyclables that are collected in the blue cart are sent to Stockton Recycling. And in the past, there was potential for Bertolati to actually generate some revenue from the sales of those recyclables, but not so much anymore in this market. And with ongoing contamination issues, there's actually a service charge for them. Uh, the organic material from the green cart is initially taken to Bertolati to remove some of the contamination. And then it is either sent out to the city Modesto's compost facility or to California's, California soils for invernalis for processing. The regular general solid waste in the black cart is currently taken to either Covanta, uh, which is the waste to energy facility or out to the landfill. Covanta contract will be up in two thousand and twenty seven though. And so it's likely, although not assured, that it'll probably all become a hundred percent landfill centric. So. Next slide, please. The agreement specifies the services and program parameters for each, each of the services that Bertolati provides to the city. These include the business, commercial, residential, multifamily, city facilities and buildings, educational institutions, and then also the construction and demolition waste. And they also provide collection containers and bins and pickup services for city sponsored events. Additionally, up to twice per year, Bertolati provides the large forty yard, excuse me, forty yard bins for community cleanup event. Currently, that is utilized for the pre-disposal day that we have out at River Bluff. City waste and debris that is delivered to the transfer station by city personnel is also accepted without charge. For example, like the waste that is generated or collected from code enforcement or the streets, street sweeping weight or non right of way illegal disposal sites. Also, two times a year, Bertolati also offers city customers free bulky item pickup services. On average, there's approximately forty appointments that are made each week. Uh, the services, um, only offered for single family residences, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and local home parks. It's not for commercial businesses. Construction and demolition waste collection and recycling service is also facilitated through Bertolati. This includes the separation of debris and documentation showing that at least sixty five percent of all that material is recycled. Bertolati also collects illegal disposal sites that are in the city's right of ways. This doesn't include alleyways and any areas that are not directly in the right of way. This is facilitated by a weekly list of reported disposal sites that are submitted by the city to Burt. They don't actively go out and look for these sites. It's, it's information that comes from us. Burt is actually currently doing two days of illegal disposal site collection, however, even though it's not, even though it's not in the contract. Uh, Bertolati is not required to collect any hazardous waste materials such as waste tires or household chemicals. However, they do provide a curbside used oil collection. And they also have a waste tire collection bin for the city. The seasonal leaf and limb collection for residential, residential household. In two thousand and twenty, the council approved the program change from a year round to a seasonal program. And this was due to the addition of the ninety gallon organics cart that was added to service. Um, seasonal collection runs from October first to January ninth annually. Further reasoning was based on the cost savings that actually helped to offset the expense of the, of those organic, the organic cart service and purchase of those organic carts, um, which actually helped to reduce the rate that was implemented at the time. Leaf and limb piles that are placed in the street during the off season months is considered an illegal disposal. And to enforce compliance with the program parameters, a violation of penalty structure was incorporated into municipal code at that time. Education and outreach efforts to inform residents of the program change included information in the recycling guide, landscape signs throughout the city, flyers in the utility billing, newspaper articles, door to door personal con, contact, website, and social media posts. Next slide, please. Services that Bertolati does not provide include the hazardous waste collection, excluding the two previously mentioned programs. Burt does not collect hazardous waste such as paint, solvents, gasoline, pool chemicals, household hazardous waste. They also don't collect e-waste, universal waste, or medical waste. However, the city and the county both have programs that, that address those, those disposal programs. So that is essentially what I have tonight for you. I'm happy to entertain any questions you guys may have.
Any, any council members have any questions?
Yeah. Is it not?
There it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tony. So I did have a couple of questions. Uh, first, you said that they pick up the illegal dumping, but we have to contact them.
The way that program is, we, when we get reports for illegal dumping typically through GoGov or from people calling, we create a list that is sent to Bertolati on a weekly basis, and they schedule it for the Monday pickup. Right now, they're actually doing two days. Courtesy.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Cause I know for a while their code enforcement was, was handling all of those and they were taking care of them pretty rapidly.
We are code enforcement is, is doing, is still doing that. Um, we're working together, just to address the, we have. But uh, yeah, that, that's facilitated just by what we sent.
Thank you. And then I had another question. So you said that the dates for the leaf and limb pickup are from October ninth until January ninth.
October first to January.
October first until January ninth. So that was the big thing I wanted to bring back. People cut their trees and they, and they do trimming uh, during springtime, like even right now, if you're to drive through the community, countless, not just my district, every district has tree trimmings, limbs, leaves, things that, that are annual that need to be cut at this time of the year. This is something that I, I felt needed to be brought back. What would it look like to get that put back on a year round basis instead of for four months out of the year?
So, um, we've actually discussed this in our meetings. Um, it's, it's just an added cost that would probably have to be paid for by the city. There's a number of ways we could, we could do that. Um, likely it would probably need to go to the two eighteen and do a rate increase, but I, I would need to check with the city attorney. It might be possible to do it as a, a added fee based service. I'm not sure.
Councilmember Martinez. Since this is our agenda, is what we'd be talking about, sir.
So later on. Right. Okay. Then I just have two last questions. Uh, in two thousand and twenty one, when we transitioned to the three bin system, did the rate payer pay for that third bin or did Bertolati purchase those?
So Bertolati purchased them, purchased the new bins through with the additional rates that were added. It was actually for the whole.
There was a rate increase, so the rate payer purchased them. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any additional questions by the council? Any members of the public that would like to make a comment and or a question?
Uh, Dave Prentis, sir. Actually, I wanted to bring this up on, when, when, uh, audience get their chance. You know, one thing I hate is the California mandates. They throw on all the cities that, that, and the cities have to figure out how to pay for and how, how to do those. And when this program came in, in where they added the third and took away the limbs and leaves, I said that wasn't going to work then, and it's still not working now. The same people are still overfilling their garbage cans. And now they got three cans. They mix and match, mix and match their stuff in those. And I see on my walks, I see people, yeah, like he talked, they got limbs and leaves and, and even grass out, out, out there. And it's, and that stuff sits there for a long periods of time, collecting garbys. People walk by with the garbys and throw them in the pile, in those piles. And I, and a lot of times I've had some of the houses, they just got maybe a small bunch of grass they put out there. I talked to one lady on my, on my walk, and she says, well, the city picks that up. I says, well, no, the city don't pick that up. That's, there's those. They won't start picking up for another, another month or so. I said, it says, well, it's been being picked up. Well, and then by, after talking to her, apparently the, uh, the sweets, the street sweepers have been getting all these small piles, small piles. I said, well, they don't come around till every other week. So, but yeah. It's not, I, I don't see it's really work, working unless they get, they still got to separate all that, all that stuff in the, in the long run. Because like I said, they're missing matching all three barrels.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person. Welcome.
The three stooges and grandma stooge. Shirley Rogers, uh, live in series. I want to know if I understand right, we recoup back one third of the cost of doing the billing for them? Yes or no?
She says, is that?
We recoup one. Why are we paying two thirds of their billing? I don't get a discount for being a. Why are we paying? Would you look at, but maybe make some changes? Money is money.
Thank you, ma'am. Tony, write that down. Thank you. Next person, please. There you go. You're just getting cut off, aren't you?
The, uh, the eight year contract is probably in place. You're not going to change that part of it. Well, it's time to renew the contract. Part of the problem with the leaf and limb as it's set up now, October one to January nine. January ninth, the city Bertolati doesn't go around and pick up every Christmas tree that's still in the street. Okay? What the residents don't know is that you have to factor in your recycling blue bin, which is the week they pick up the leaf and limb. So if January ninth, if that isn't a week, your week may be before at the end of December. Most folks don't know that. Most folks don't know how it, it works. Uh, that you only get maybe every other week from October to January. They're not picking up in front of your house on a weekly day. It's every other week in conjunction with the blue can with recycling. And so that remains a problem. You put your Christmas tree out on January the eighth, it's going to be there until October because the city won't come by and pick it up as an illegal dump. There's one sitting over on Moffett Road that's been there for six months. And so it just doesn't happen. And the city just doesn't get around because the employees drive by and they don't do anything about an illegal dump if they see it themselves. A citizen has to report it before any action is taken. It's a knee jerk situation that won't get corrected until employees, when they see a problem, when they drive by it, they document it, send it to public works or over to county's office. And even then, uh, it doesn't get a lot of service right away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
uniquely series. I had a conversation with her last week about the leaf and limb thing. And she went through the fine and stuff like that, which isn't any brochure or anything, you know, first offense, second, whatever. I think there's people here, they might want to know other people on Zoom. And I think these things possibly should be in the next flyer they put out for garbage pickup for two thousand and twenty five. And, uh, I think it starts at a hundred dollars or something like that. Uh, but the general public doesn't know that. So maybe they're thinking there's no recourse to this by a fine or anything. Because like, we all know, we drive down all these streets every day and there's dried stuff everywhere. And I think that's going to be addressed here real soon. But, uh, and, uh, another thing that she was talking about for the presentation about paint and all that stuff. I've never seen anything, maybe I overlooked it, uh, in a flyer or anything from the city to take those items to the county corporate yard where they'll take not everything, but just about everything like fuel and paint. That'd be nice if we could add those next year to the flyer. So people get a more idea of, you know, hey, there's a penalty for that. And of course, people are going to go against it and everything anyway.
Thank you. Tony, you had some responses. Go ahead.
Probably should have included this in the presentation, but, um, as of recent, we've, as far as enforcement goes for the leaf and limb. And this is strictly for the leaf and limb that we can assign responsibility to the, the household, the actual customer. Um, we have really stepped up our enforcement program and we're actually utilizing our public work staff to help to do that. Because outside of the seasonal, you know, the season, it's considered an illegal dump. There is a penalty structure. The first violation is a courtesy notice. And the second, and the second is actually a hundred dollar fine because it is considered an illegal dump. And so we've really we've taken this time in the last three years to really try to do an educational base because it was a change in, in the program. Um, but at this point, we're confident that people are aware that they're not supposed to put it in front yards anymore. So, um, we really have taken effort to amplify enforcement. I think I'm hoping that we'll see some behavior changes with our residents, um, with the issuance of these penalties. But as far as hazardous waste information, that actually is included on our, in our recycling guide, and it's also on the also in the website.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And Vice Mayor, you have your button pressed. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I had a conversation with City Manager and Sam from Public Works. And if, if having leaf and limb year round is going to cost all taxpayers too much. Maybe we can look into a, an agreement with Bertolati, much like the heavy item or bulky item pickup, where they could go on the website, sign up for a date, pay a fee online, and have them come and pick it up. I think that's the most reasonable answer to this question. And that way we're not raising the rates for everybody in our city. The only people that would pay more are the ones that would use it. Just an idea, right now they can do it twice. Bulk item pickups, maybe we also allow one of those to be leaf and limb. But those ideas, I, I believe we should meet with Bertolati and just see if those are possibilities. Thank you.
Just to make sure, is anybody online? Any hands raised before we move on? Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopt rules allow no more than five minutes, resolution two thousand and seven one oh six. Where expressions of non agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not to the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any actions on any matters which is not on the posted agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five minute provision. Anyone wishing to address city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. And we'll start off with the yellow cards. First person, Nathan Sanchez. Welcome, sir.
Greetings, Mayor Lopez, elected officials. My name is Nathan Sanchez. I'm a resident of San Osaslo County. And series is a city I call home. Please allow me to quickly read the statistics that I put some thought into and looked up. Last year in two thousand and twenty three, three hundred and seventy eight sworn in law enforcement officers were shot in the line of duty. Those attacks, forty six officers were killed by gunfire. Flip the script. The number of fatal police shootings in the same year where the civilian suffered. the fatal shot was 1,063. I'm not here this evening to try and justify or to try and argue against who was right, who was wrong. If it was over policing or if it was a combative individual that did not want to get arrested. But I'm here to remind everybody that within the next couple of weeks, we are going to be gathering for National Night Out. And I know that there's going to be one here next door as well. But the residents of Saturn Court are taking time out to recognize our police department. I was here, me and my wife were here in this same spot last year about the same time inviting our elected officials. And as I was reading the statistics, National Night Out has been going on for the past 40 years. But the rate for our officers to die in the line of duty hasn't decreased, but it has increased. Now, um, status say that we did that last year and it, it nothing minimized, nothing really changed. But I know for a fact that the individuals that were a part of this national night, that there was a plant, a seed planted to help build a camaraderie amongst each other as civilians, as residents of the city of series and with our police department itself. I want to thank the elected officials that have personally contacted me and have committed to assist in this event because it's not a solo effort. But I want to remind you, Chief Barry, and also Fire Chief Wise, that we support our police department. And we appreciate everything that you guys do. And I know that it's not seen or noticed or the appreciation is not shown every day. But please join us at this day to reaffirm that it is. What I'm going to do is I'm going to leave the details to our elected officials with Mayor Lopez, also with our chiefs. And if you have time that day, please join us. Be well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I felt like I deserved an applause. I don't know why, but that was great. Next person is Destiny Condit. Were you hiding?
Good evening, City of Series, City Council. Destiny Condit with Senator Maria Alvaro Gil's office. I am her district rep. Patience aid. So good to see you all again. Just here to give a, hopefully it's a brief report on everything that's been up to and just some district stuff. Taking it off first, we did just wrap up Santa Claus County Fair. I'm seeing most of you there also participating. We did have a booth and we're in the Costco building, so we're happy to participate. And we look forward to next year. And then Senator is currently on summer recess, but she continuously remaining active in the district as are her staff. We're doing a lot more hospital tours lately. And then we also just wrapped up, well, are still wrapping up our nonprofit on our we had about four that were picked in Santa Claus County, which I believe is the largest of all the other counties she goes from. So here in series, we picked Center for Human Services, series partner. And then we also had Odessa Downtown Streets Team, Central Valley Community Resources in Riverbank. And then we also had share the Santa Claus homeless advocacy and resource enterprise. So we're happy to honor these nonprofits for all they do. And we're continuously doing that throughout the year. A few more things that are more district related. Our office has been paying close attention to the SVP cases. If some of you know today, there was one on, um, Sir Gray and his release was, it was granted. And they moved, um, the next court hearing to October 22nd to find a new location. So it will no longer be Turlock, but another location. So that battle will be coming in October. And then, uh, the other SVP Timothy Weathers is coming up tomorrow. So, um, don't know that situation yet. But we are paying a close attention to it and posting on our social media. And then Senator has eight bills that passed. They were all her main bills. So we're really happy to see that. They are now moving into appropriations. So after summer recess, we'll know better on when to expect these, uh, to be hitting the floor. And then last but not least, our scholarships have ended. So we awarded two students within, um, the district with $5,000, one from Houston and one from Bishop. The Houston student will be attending UC Merced for civil engineering. And then the Bishop student will be attending John J. College of Criminal Justice for Forensic Psychology. And then we awarded two students for the $3,000 scholarships. And that will be a student from Mariposa attending Merced College for Business Admin and Medical Business. And then the same student that's receiving the 5,000 is also receiving the 3,000, um, for forensic psychology. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person we have Irma Luis Gutierrez. Her topic is on homeless by our house by Independence Park.
Hola.
Hola, como esta?
Bien. Mi nombre es Irma Gutierrez, pero en este, no sé si quiera que digan español.
No habla, no habla inglés. Christina, would you mind interpreting? Sorry to put you on the spot. I could do it, but I just want to make sure there's dialogue. La vaya de parada.
Oh, sí. No, pues quería decir que si me podían ayudar que la gente ahí todos los días es lo mismo y iban se cansaban.
She's referring to the homeless that are staying there.
Uh, thanks.
Todos los días. Y van los, decía, si va, pero luego más se viene y otro.
Uh, there's about out there and they.
Pues yo quería decir que nos vean ayudar en esta como porque ellos traen perro, tenemos un perro y toda la noche ladran, deja dormir. Y pues vamos a ir y cerrar.
Como cuántas personas son, how many people? Más o menos.
Ya están como diez, veinte por ahí, diez, veinte para arriba.
Por ahí.
Ya el parque está seco, toda la gente que va me dice, no, tu casa ya bajó de valor. Es horrible, es feo.
La mejor en nuestro chief puede comentar un poquito, este, yo sí he hablado muchas veces de parte de ese problema. Maybe the chief can answer some of these questions. I have actually reported that so many times. I'm sure many members of the council have done the same. Uh, maybe there's some thing we can do to go above and beyond the same thing we've been doing over and over again. Chief, would you mind, sir?
Uh, yeah, we've, we've been out there several times. Um, up until recently, the law has hammered us, uh, essentially from what we can do as it relates to enforcement. Recently, within the last couple of weeks, the law just changed. So now we are able to kick them out essentially. However, I do believe that we still need to, um, update our local ordinance to reflect the new change in the law, if I'm not mistaken.
Nubia, do you mind answering that question?
Yes, we're evaluating the necessary changes in the code to bring back the council for what the chief is referring to are the enforcement provisions on how to now cite as an option to address the issue.
Okay.
But we hear your concerns. We'll, we'll keep out there and see what we can do.
Yes, señora, sigue llamando cada vez que le pasa, no pare de comentar porque sin, sin sabiendo no vamos a poder hacer nada. So I'm telling her that to continue to report it because without knowing, we will be able to address the issue. Gracias. We'll go to anyone else who does not have a yellow card that would like to speak. Oh, Christina, by the way, you did a great job. He deserves a raise, sorry.
Hey, press series. Series had July, uh, a job fair July 11th. And it looked like it was a pretty good turnout. Uh, series post 491, uh, postal colors. Uh, they had 276 participants and 14 veterans show up. Now, hopefully a bunch of those got jobs. Also, I want to, uh, want to thank mayor for, uh, getting the dog park open at six o'clock in the morning. And it looks like, uh, it looks like they've been opening sooner than, than that. My dog and I appreciate that, that and, and, uh, so, uh, I've been trying to let other dog on around the, at what time they've been opening up. So, uh, and you know, even though the weather says it's 68 degrees outside, but there's no wind. And it feels like it's in the high eighties. And by noon, by 11 o'clock, it's already up around 100 degrees. So anytime the park is open early, so a lot of people can get their dogs in there, uh, prior to the heat. Uh, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yeah, Cook series. Think I talked to, I'm not going too far with it. We rose Linda about an incident. Of course, it, we both agree it happened usually on the east side or the west side of the highway. But I'm sure there's others on the east side, uh, of side shows. There was one about 10:30 last Friday, Saturday night. It was pretty extreme. And I was wondering, uh, what the consequences are. If they're spotted, pulled over, uh, they get fined, do they get their, their vehicle towed? Is a, a city kind of thing? Does it fall under the county or the state? These things are ridiculous and I'm sure it's really hard to catch them. Or if somebody has video and they can identify the plate on the vehicle. Uh, we don't hear too much except for Sacramento. And maybe their guidelines are a little bit different than ours down here. So I was kind of wondering about that. And again, we get back here to the stop signs. You know, there's not much funding. I've talked to Chief Perry about that. I don't know. I think we could do a lot with that gazebo over there and force things in the city instead of spending that money. But we, we got a serious problem in California, probably most of America. People aren't stopping at stop signs. They get away with a little bit on right turn at a, at a traffic lap, but always a stop signs. And again, we all see this every day. And how long is it going to take before one of us loses somebody in our own family or a friend or a neighbor or something? It's very serious. And you know, some of them drive a little bit faster. You can stand out here, that corner over here in the morning, in the afternoon. And there's like dozens and dozens of people that just run right through the signs. I guess they got an epiphany from God or something that they're going to be safe running through the intersection. But it's going to happen. We all know it's going to happen. And is that when we're going to start to do something about it? If you got to stretch stuff, do whatever you got to do. These people here, along with fire and everybody else and code force, I've said it before. These people are the ones that hold everything together. Without them, everything turns to crap. And we're in the crap mode right now with this traffic stuff. So I'd like to see, you know, put your heads together, call people. If it's another state's fault, now what they do other cities, we got to put a dampener on this thing. And if it's just we do it here in our own community, we've gained something instead of lost something. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good evening, uh, City Council. Uh, let me restart. Good evenings, uh, City Council, city staff and residents. Justin Farkas representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alan Nice. Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the city for making, uh, your space available here for us to hold our monthly mobile district office hours. It's a very, uh, helpful cause that we're very adamant about. We do it, uh, nearly every city of our district at least once a month. So thank you for being a part of that. I also want to thank all the staff and the council members, uh, Rosa Linda Vieira and Mayor Lopez for your participation in our town hall a couple of weeks ago here in this building, uh, where we discussed the topic of affordability alongside Turlock Irrigation District and Stanislas Latino Chamber of Commerce. And we covered a myriad of issues. Uh, Mr. Ben Benzinger and the series quarter did a really in-depth article about what that looked like, uh, what that town hall, uh, discussed, uh, both from the panelists and the members of the public. So those of you here didn't get a chance to listen in, I strongly encourage you to go to read that. You can have an idea about some of the issues that we talked about. Only thing I really have to cover in terms of legislation this week, as many of you know, we are on summer recess at the moment. However, uh, during our summer recess, we did have our first bill signed by the governor last weekend. Uh, that's Assembly Bill 1796. And that bill will now require for schools to provide, uh, notification of, uh, career technical education courses provided on campus to each and every student and every parent. Really excited about this, hope to grow our workforce in this way. And with many of the other bills that we have moving through the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Any emails?
Wait, no emails received.
Okay, citizens communication is now closed. Moving on, is there any conflict of interest from the city council? Consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar consider routine in nature, be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Recommendation of staff will be accepted by a roll call vote. Otherwise, is there any council, I see two buttons pushed. We'll go with Ms. Rosa Linda. Which item?
Number eight.
Number eight. Councilmember Martinez.
Number seven.
Number seven. Members of the public.
Number nine.
Casey, I saw his, yeah, I just saw it, Mr. Casey. But go ahead, we'll go back to Mr. Casey.
Number nine.
Number nine. Councilmember, Mr. Casey.
Number five.
Number five. Bring this back to the council for a motion on the rest.
Make a motion to approve items one through four and item six of the consent calendar. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vieira.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We'll start with item number five. General correspondence information only. Mr. Casey, that one's yours.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you. You know, it's just general correspondence information only. I have a question. Chief, Fire Chief, uh, in April, the, our last meeting in April, the street there, I asked who was responsible for the weed controlling and you spoke up. You know, I drive by the, I don't know, they had reds, but I go down Central Avenue, cross over the overpass. We have property to the left and to the right. Uh, the little triangles got tumbleweed all over. Other property to fight got weed clear to the fence for the protection of the ice ore. That's the, uh, mobile home park. And, uh, last Monday, I really came home. I, I, I took my sister to the doctor's office at 600 Coffee. I don't know how many of you familiar with that. But anyway, I'm leaving, they're going to take my sister home. And one of our citizens said, Jim, are you still in the city council? I go, yeah. He said, well, let's cross the street. So we crossed the walk in that center area. He said, what the heck is going on with that property? And he was talking about the property I just described. I said, "I, I don't know. I, I, you know, I'm Mr. City Councilperson. It's the responsibility, I understand, of our fire department to do something about it." I came after that meeting and passed on that information to our city manager. He said he would check into it. Uh, last Wednesday, I was on my way to, uh, a family reunion, and sometime between Wednesday morning and Wednesday afternoon, somebody even started a fire on the property on the left side, the larger block. And, and, and I remember when the Modesto City Fire Department took the responsibility of our fire department in the first year. I, that's when I came on the council, in the first year, the fire department posted a different properties to the property owner, giving them notice to clean up the property. I, I'm not sure, uh, what's going on, but it, it is an embarrassment to the city because it's, it's a main artery, and, and it looks like hell, excuse the expression. Uh, is there anything that can be done? I ask, that's the question. No, all that comes to that. Is it, is there anything that can be done? Or should I just tell the, the citizens and should I tell my wife who's in the car every time we drive over? There's nothing that, just accept the fact that that's the way it's gonna be. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Casey, uh, which part property are you referring to? Across from the high school?
Yes, the across from the high school, that, that V where they park cars. Those tumbleweeds all along the edge, so pretty soon they're gonna dry up and roll everywhere to the city. And then the property across the street adjacent, I think it's the same property owner for the, uh, the Mobile Home Park there, it looks like heck. And, and on Wednesday, Monday, somebody comes to me at the doctor's office. "You're a City Councilperson, can't you do something?" I say, "I, I, what can I do? I reported it to our city manager more than once. I brought it to your attention in April." I said, "No, I don't know what I can do." Then Wednesday, I come home, and heck, somebody, like my wife would say, you know, because people smoke cigarettes and then they throw the cigarette out. Whatever started the fire, who knows? It's only a small portion. But what can we do? I mean, what, what, what can you tell the citizen that, I don't know?
Yeah, absolutely. And they can report it through the Ask Series app, and then it gets to our inspector, and then our inspector will go out to the property, and then our inspector will notify the property owner to clean. And the property owner will have so many days to clean and then do a forced cleaning.
Okay, so, so the process is that... The, the citizen reports it to somebody. That somebody will then report it to some, I mean, but don't, don't fire people drive by that, done code enforcement? I mean, it, it's so obvious, pathetic. And it's not just that property, but it's, it's throughout the city. It's just pathetic. And back to the original time that Modesto took it over. The fire department, the fire marshal, someone posted property. They note, they note the little sign about this big, notifying property owner they need to clean up the property. That happened the first year, probably the first six or seven months that the Modesto City took over the responsibility, but not since then. And it's pathetic. But again, explain, I'm the citizen. Who do I call? Modesto City?
Oh, it's the Ask Series app. And once you enter it into the app, then it gets, it gets forwarded to a fire inspector who goes out and inspects the property.
I, I'm sorry, I, I'm accused of not hearing. It's not much I don't hear. Sometimes I shut people off. The first step is, is it an app or a phone?
It's the app. It's the Ask.
So if I don't have, so my eighty-year-old neighbor that doesn't have an app, she gets ahold of my grandson? Is that what happens? I mean, you gotta have an app to report this?
That's the easiest way to report it, or you can just call the fire department, and we'll go out and take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then, then another issue, Sam, uh, in, in the report, you list all the parks, and there's nothing to report about the Lion Park. I, I think it should probably be removed from the park area and put into a different area altogether. Again, I drive by that very often. It's just a weed patch. And when you, when we, the city goes out there to do something, they do something, but they don't complete the project. Right now, you would go there, and it's been mowed and disced, but all around the property itself, there's still weeds higher than, than I can stand. So it, it, again, it's, it's an artery coming into our city. And I, I don't, I don't know. We talked about Lions Park before, and you responded. But it really needs to be, it really, it shouldn't even be called a park. It should just be called a weed patch. Maybe, maybe if it was named after Lions Club, maybe we could go be, go before Lions Club. It said, "Would you mind if we changed the name from Lions Park to Weed Patch?" I, I don't know. It's just... Again, when, when I, when I ran from office back in whenever it was, the main concern was the, the beauty of the city, that how it was kept, and we addressed that a little bit. But it's pathetic that, uh... It was just, it's, it's pathetic that a citizen has to call and report how something looks when we have code enforcement, the guy cleaning the streets, the regular maintenance people. They see them just like we do. I wonder if they lived across the street from the Lions Park? If they, if somebody in your department lived across the street from the Lions Park? I don't think it looked the same way. And the same is true with the property I talked about with the team. If, if, if they drove by that four or five times a day like I do, it probably wouldn't look the same. But anyway, thank you both for listening to me. Thank you.
Could I, could I add one thing, Mr. Casey? Uh, I'm pretty sure the park is on a scheduled rotation. I'll double-check with staff. I'll find out exactly what the rotation that Lions Park falls on. I know we, we disc it maybe twice or three times a year, uh, trying to get it away from, uh, being... Having high grass area where it could be possible of fire. So, uh, that, I mean, I, I know for a fact that we address it at least two to three times a year where we go around and disc it. But I'll double-check with the schedule and make sure that it's maintained properly.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Martinez, you got your button pressed?
Yeah, I had a question for, uh, Fire Chief. Do you know what the, I don't, I don't know if you have the answer now, but do you know what the, the timeframe is from when a citizen reports it to when it goes to fire inspector, to when it finally gets cleaned or handled?
Yeah, it usually goes to them right away, so the, the soonest they can get out there to inspect it. So it should be right away. And they have ten days after they're notified to clean the property. And then after that, we will do a forced clean.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Rosalinda?
Thank you. I'm just kind of following up. I see TJ in front of me, and I think he knows where we're going with this. Um, like, do I report it multiple times, such as Tuscany Village where the weeds are now over? You know, I've emailed it, I've put it on the app. Um, do I just keep reporting it every week or what timeframe before I re-report it? Since it's been like that since everything happened a few months ago, back about three months ago.
I'm sorry, what property was that?
Tuscany Village on Whitmore.
Okay, I'll have to look into it and get back to you.
I thought TJ had the information. He knows I'm making eye contact with him because him and I have talked about...
So, uh, Tuscany Village is kind of an outlier. Um, there's been a lot going on with that. I know there are weeds. We talked about that. But with the bank taking ownership, and then they locked the gates again, so we can't get in there, and we're back to square one on that. But that went to code enforcement. I don't know if that went over to the fire department. So I could work with them, get over there, and probably start citing them, I guess. Um, and then the property that Councilmember Casey was talking about, I believe that's a county address. If I'm correct on the location, it's... Or to the high school, Central and Service.
That's from the Series High, actually.
Yeah, he's talking.
Oh, the, the triangle?
Oh, yeah. So it's, no, it's not county.
Okay, all right.
Would it be easier, TJ, if I just go through and re-report it so it can start the process again if it's kind of lost in the process?
You shouldn't have to, but that's probably the easiest way. We do not have a code enforcement secretary right now, so our code enforcement officers are kind of double-duty, checking, uh, checking the incoming requests and then going out.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the public?
John Warren, City of Series, in relation to the complaint. The complaint got filed back in April. And the complaint was filed again tonight. I mean, when a citizen comes to a council person, and a council person comes to the council and complains to the responsible party, who happens to be, in this case, Chief White, um, it shouldn't take three or four, five months to gain compliance. City App is a very hard thing to negotiate. I, I am familiar with that, and I don't use the City App because nothing ever happens when you file a complaint on that app, okay? I can show you countless, countless filings on that app, and the department and the city have taken some action, but there's no follow-up. Nothing ever gets completed, and that's the fallacy of this whole system. City Councilman can't get the damn grass cut on a lot across from the high school. I remember when he asked and commented, "Well, we're about to send our notices out, and we get great compliances from our notices." Well, here's a case where we don't get great compliance, and there's no follow-up. And that's not acceptable as a city. And, and... Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, Dave Pratt of Series. Uh, Mr. Casey, the good news is I deleted both my City Apps off my phone. They're too frustrating and time-consuming, and, and they didn't want to work. And most time, I wanted to destroy my phone because I couldn't get the app to work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Bring this item back for a motion, Mr. Casey?
Make a motion to approve the information, item number five.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vieira?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number seven. I do not recall who asked. Mr. Martinez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have a financial question, so I believe this is probably for Shannon. Uh, it says that the, the project's, uh, construction includes general capital improvements from the ARPA funds, which is a total of four hundred and sixty-one thousand. Uh, but then it says that at the bottom that we're going to need a budget amendment for an additional two hundred and eight thousand. That's the per capita grant, correct? So is that four hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars on top of the additional two hundred and eight thousand you're requesting?
That's correct, Mr. Martinez.
Okay.
Your answer's right.
Okay, that was my only question.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we are using two funds, the ARPA that was approved back in, uh, uh, back in June, six twenty-three, for five hundred thousand. And the per capita grant also as part of that to support that. Well, we're definitely gonna use the per capita grant and use part of the ARPA fund to help us with this project.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember, Ms. Rosalinda?
Just for clarification, I believe I might have asked this question prior to the meeting. I just want to make sure that we were not using any additional or using monies outside of the amount that's already allocated.
He said, "No, we're not." Okay, I, I believe the whole thing lit up like a Christmas tree. I'll take, uh, Mr. Silveira, Vice Mayor, first. Go ahead.
Great news about the gazebo project, and we allotted seven hundred and thousand to that project with the grant and ARPA funds. Unless we have some crazy change orders and things that are out of our control right now, there's a really good chance that project could come in even a hundred thousand dollars under budget. So definitely want to thank the city staff, all the work they've done. Had to go out and find some more people that were willing to build it for us. It's gonna be a wonderful, wonderful thing for our community moving forward. So fingers crossed that it may come in way under budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Casey, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We need to do something to the gazebo, no question. But I think we need to come back to the drawing board. And it doesn't, it doesn't matter where the money's coming from. Uh, I, I think it's way too much to be spent. And, uh, I think if we look at the history of the gazebo, as I understand it, uh, it wasn't around or didn't pay any attention. It was really constructed with donated material, donated help, of course, following all permit requirements that the city would have. And I, I think it would be a, a good project. It could take back to the Rotary, the Lions, the Rop and the Kwanis, and people in general, Home Depot, and, and make it a community. It doesn't matter that this ninety-five thousand or hundred thousand or ten thousand dollars is coming from, where it's coming from, it's coming really from all of our pockets. It's our money. And, uh, granted, we have a time limit to spend this money, but maybe we could find a better place to spend it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember? Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, real quick on that. So, uh, on the per capita grant, we have until December thirty-first this year, this year to expend those funds, or we lose them, we pay back over two hundred thousand dollars back to the state. So we do have a fairly narrow timeline to get this done, uh, for us to go back and start from scratch, uh, would put that money in jeopardy right now.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate that information. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one last thing I wanted to say was that I'm definitely looking forward to this gazebo being renovated. Uh, having an opportunity being put on the Concerts in the Park Committee with Councilmember Vieira by you has given us, uh, the ability to be there at every concert, Rosalinda and I. And it's, it's, it's small, it's compact. When there's a full band playing, they're cramped, and they're on top of each other. Even when there's a single performer, uh, it's difficult to get up there with them with their equipment or take pictures. There's not a lot of room. So seeing this improve, knowing that, uh, Concerts in the Park will benefit from it, our street fair performers will benefit from it, and then anyone that wants to use the park and enjoy the park will benefit from it. So I absolutely do support this, and, uh, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item seven.
I just want to make sure, I think we need to go out to the public.
Yeah, you know, you're right. We didn't have them.
Okay, this time I actually remembered. Members of the public, go ahead.
Let's not rush, Mr. Martinez. John Warren, City of Series. Um, I spoke with, uh, city engineer in regards to this the other day because I had a couple of questions. I kept hearing two hundred thousand dollars was the grant money, when it's actually two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And I was confused about what the amendment might be, and he explained it to me. The, I believe the contract came in at four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, and there's a contingency fee that makes it a little over a half a million. Well, with two hundred and eight in the pot already, okay? That means we only need to use about three hundred thousand dollars of the, of the ARPA funds that were appropriated for this. So my math makes it a little closer to two hundred thousand dollars left over if there aren't any project changes or overrun, whatever. So my suggestion is you take this two hundred thousand dollars, fix the audio visual system in this building, okay? And I know the money has to be appropriated and used by the twenty-fourth, you know, by December of twenty twenty-four. All the appropriations or all the money that's going to be used for ARPA, the projects have to be selected by that date. And then they have to be spent by twenty twenty-six. But the first two hundred thousand will probably be the, uh... Rent money that'll be spent, and then the other three hundred thousand. ARPA funds. So there's gonna be about two hundred thousand. So there's going to be about two hundred thousand dollars left, and that's very good. But we need to use it in the right place and we need to authorize it before the, this year. So we don't get behind the eight ball to lose that money. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any additional comments? Welcome back.
Thank you. I want to know how much money was designated, where did it come from? And is it just for the gazebo? What is this money for?
Sam, if you could just explain to her.
Well, uh, uh, the five hundred thousand came in from the ARPA funds, which is the, uh, the fund that was...
Where it come from, just how much, what is it designated for?
What we requested back, back then, I requested five hundred thousand to, to build this gazebo. And on this, on top of it, that, uh, there was another grant that, uh, was awarded to improve the gazebo for two, over two hundred thousand dollars. I believe it was two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
We got money going in, did the public vote on it? Did we say anything about what we want? Where, where's a pad, a water pad? And, and they can't play on a playground because stuff is hot, they can't touch. Now they're putting them water pads, but we're going to put...
Ma'am, please speak into the mic. Speak into the mic, please.
We're going to put this fancy gazebo in this little tiny park in the middle of a little county city, in the middle of nowhere, because somebody wants to use it for concerts in the park six weeks out of the year. Bullshit.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person? So yeah, please don't follow us today.
How do you top that? I think anybody that's been here to these meetings and distribution, all these funds, so I think, uh, the whole thing's ludicrous and probably mentioned that before. Uh, you know, I, I kind of wonder why they never got a contractor that builds homes to come out and what he could do? Because one citizen was on Zoom one night and he said, there's new homes in series that cost about five hundred thousand. And that's a home and not a gazebo. So again, like Mr. Casey there, that money's not being spent correctly. And although Mr. Silveira said, oh, gee, it's going to be tremendous and it's going to be beautiful and it's going to look similar. It's baloney, it's about money and where this money can go somewhere else. Again, I don't know, is there ever a, uh, somebody that, a contractor that builds homes that can do this, you know, instead of this metal thing that's supposed to appear somewhere? Uh, again, Mr. Casey, I believe you're right.
Sam, I got a quick question, is there any possibility that there may be some, what was that? No, I was saying, is there any possibility that there would be any money saved, especially in this economy? On the project?
Mr. Mayor, let's, let's remember one thing, any, any, any city projects, it has, it requires prevailing wages.
Yeah, I read that.
So, 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 I mean, uh, you can bring a contractor in, but you got to pay him with the prevailing wage and that could be costly.
Absolutely, yeah, I just want to make sure the public knows that, that's the reason why I'm asking that question.
Sir.
Okay, no, thank you. Is there any additional comments? No?
Move to approve number seven on the content calendar.
Before that, is there any hands raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Mr. Vice Mayor just wanted to double check, sir, go ahead. There is one on the floor. Looking for a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Well, before I go, no, I, I, I think that the city needs to improve its bidding process, but no.
Councilmember Vera?
I think we, I would love to see a water park, but since this was allocated just for the gazebo, yes, I would like to use the grant money for what it was granted for, which is the gazebo, so yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Item number eight? Who pulled item number eight? Vera, was that you?
Alright, I, uh, with this one, which I'm struggling to find in my agenda packet. Um, my main concerns with this is, I believe this is the same parcel I've been emailing about since November. And I thought I got an email from the city manager in Nubia stating that it was corrected post, correctly posted. Um, because there are interested parties, which is why I've been emailing repeatedly regarding this. I believe there's three of them, there might even be, I think I have possibly two of them on the Zoom tonight, um, regarding the status of this. Um, just because at the time it was posted, it was required by law. So I think we should be following our obligations to actually post it as required at the time that we approved it. And then also, um, the incorrect information that was repeatedly provided to me. So I just wanted to see, uh, why we're having all of this kind of confusion.
Sure, so the item was originally brought before the council last year, um, to be declared surplus land. Once you declare an item surplus, there is a ninety-day waiting period where the property is then posted on the HCD website. And it is also, uh, required that the whoever is doing posting send out an email. Your prior director sent out an email to a hundred and thirty-one interested parties, people listed on HCD's website, as well as other known developers in the area. Um, the individual who you will be reviewing an offer from that individual was not any of those a hundred and thirty-one individuals. They somehow found out about the property. Since I was not employed with the city, I do not know what happened exactly with the posting, but it sounds like HCD, it was not done correctly. And HCD does not have a record of the posting on the website. We have record of the email in, in the former director's emails, we know the email went out to a hundred and thirty-one interested parties to purchase the property. But then you have to officially post it on the website and we cannot find record that was done. So in the interim, uh, we looked into reposting it. And by the ti- since the time this item was first taken to, to coun- uh, to council to declare a surplus to February, HCD changed the rules that anything under point five acres no longer has to be declared surplus, it can be declared exempt surplus, which then alleviates the need to post it for ninety days. It doesn't change the fact that it's available, it just shortens the time period so that if you do get an offer, you can act quicker in having to wait the thirty, uh, the three months to let a, an affordable housing developer essentially have first, uh, bite at the apple. So we are looking to now declare it exempt surplus, which means we don't have to post it, but, um, we still have to let HC know that we have declared it exempt surplus. And then anybody who is interested can obviously make an offer on the property, we can engage a real estate, uh, uh, professional, I guess, if you want to market it. But the individual that you will be reviewing an offer for this evening, you know, probably just wrote, drove by and was persistent. I personally have not received any communication about other interested parties looking to purchase the property, but we're happy to give them any information. You don't have to take the offer presented to you in closed session this evening, and so then there will still be a piece of property that is available for purchase. Any other questions?
No, I think that, because my concern is, again, I've talked to three of them, I believe two of them may be on Zoom tonight. Uh, one stated he called, I want to say about a month ago, asking about it, and he was told no. So that is kind of alarming to me, I have multiple emails from November asking why it wasn't on the website, including a link to the website. I'm also checked in with the county just to confirm that it also wasn't posted on the website. So I think that, to me, by delaying and not doing what we needed to, doesn't mean we get to circumvent the law. So to me, I think we still need to post it as required at the time that we voted and passed it to post it. That we still need to follow the rules that we were obligated to play by at the time that it was passed.
Do you mind confirming that?
On, on this particular item, because there has been a change in regulations since the last time the council considered this. Staff is presenting it for the council's consideration tonight under the new set of regulations. Basically, it wipes the slate clean. It doesn't mean that you can't consider other offers, it doesn't mean that if you're locked into anything related to the sale at any particular price. It just means that it shortens the process by which the city has to follow in order to even consider any offers. That being said, the council does have the ability to proceed, I suppose, under the old set of rules. But again, it's being presented to you tonight because those old set of rules don't apply in the same way that they did before. And so we are still obligated to bring the item to council for action, because you still would need some action that needs to be taken. There's a few, there's a few options, but the action that you take tonight does follow the rules and it follows the law. It's, the law is different now than it was last year when you considered it, and you did pass it properly. The problem was logistically something happened that unfortunately staff has not been able to figure out what, what actually happened that went wrong. But what you're considering before you tonight does follow the new regulations.
I would say it behooves everyone to get it on the market as surplus and available to sell sooner than ninety days. If we are interested and those parties are interested in purchasing it, why would we make them wait ninety days to be able to purchase it? They can put in an offer tomorrow. Well, technically in thirty days, the REZO has to poach, post on the HCD website, but if they are active interested buyers, I don't know why we'd want to delay a sale to them for ninety days. That's what we would do if we followed.
With the surplus land posting, doesn't that limit it to affordable homes or attain more affordable homes or duplexes in this case? Since it's a smaller lot or a smaller affordable home? As opposed to just anyone buying and building whatever they want to build there? That within zoning laws?
First ninety days on the old process, yes, in theory, lets everybody know that happens to check the website regularly, HCD's website, that there is a parcel that meets their needs. But, uh, a, a site that is less than point five acres, we do not get to count in our housing element as a viable, affordable housing site. It's just simply too small to actually apply for any funding state or, or, or federal funding for affordability. So I, I have a feeling that no true affordable deed restricted project can be built on this site at one point, at point one seven acre. So this may be an attainable project, whomever is considering buying it, but it, it probably won't meet the definition of deed restricted affordable housing, because you can't get enough units to make it a viable project with the funding that is available for those types of projects. But we can still make it available to those individuals if they want to build attainable housing, they're just playing in the same market that everybody else is playing in, I guess, to your point.
Mr. Casey has his button pressed.
Sure, th- thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just because the law changed, doesn't mean that we can't go by the old law, since the old laws were stricter than the new law. But more important than that, uh, if I understood the beginning of your conversation, somehow the city, based on the old law, the old requirements, somehow the city failed to post it correctly and, and it just was kind of in limbo. And then when the, this, the, the change in the law, people came forward and talked to somebody. Uh, and now, now we're, this, this resolution is to exempt and make it available to be sold. Is that, that's what this resolution's about, I believe, is just to make the property available to be sold.
So I'll, I'll give you a little bit more of the, the background on it. The rules that we were operating under last year required that in order for the city to sell the property to anyone, they first have to, the city has to first offer it up within the ninety-day timeframe to, uh, affordable housing developers. The city took the process to do that. Unfortunately, the notice just did not make its way to the website as it was required to at the time. The rules changed between then and now. Now the rules exempt this size lot because it's too small feasibly, as, as your community development director mentioned. It's too small, uh, to feasibly be attractive potentially to, uh, affordable housing developer. So the council can now take the steps of declaring it exempt. So we don't have to post this notice and send out this notice to interested affordable housing developers for ninety days. If you take the action tonight to approve it, you can start immediately considering more formal offers from anyone. It could be from affordable housing developers, it could be from a private party. So that's really the difference. So whatever action the council takes, whether you want to, I guess, go back to the old rules or the new rules, it's just a timing issue, because at the end of the ninety days, or if you move forward with the resolution tonight, you'll be able to accept any offers that you want.
And in a larger context, I just want to add, when you have a really great, large piece of property, yes, it's advantageous to reserve that property for three months to only get it out there to affordable housing developers, we would want to do that. This site is very small, it's set less than seven, a little over seven thousand square feet. Maybe you can get two small duplexes on it. In, in, the purpose of the, the rule that's in place is to allow really viable, great pieces of property that the city may own and want to sell it, give those afforded, affordable developers a chance to nab it before the free market. In this instance, I don't see the benefit if we're not going to get that really great affordable housing project. This isn't the site to, I guess, uh, want to go back to the old way. We're not going to get what, what we, what the purpose of the ninety-day statute was going to give us, which would be a really great, you know, two hundred, one hundred unit complex. Maybe you'll get one large house or two very small duplexes that will be probably more affordable by design, because they're not going to be larger than nine or feet, much more affordable than a two thousand, three thousand square feet by nature.
Thank you. Any members of the public would like to make a comment or have any questions? Any hands raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Bring this back to a motion, Rosalinda?
I don't support it, so no, I will not be making a motion to approve to violate a ordinance or a proposal that we already voted on to follow in compliance with the law at the time. So the motion won't be made by me.
Looking for a motion?
I'll move to approve number eight.
Looking for a second? No second? I get to make a second, it's been a long time, I'll make a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to say that it sounds like the old, uh, position, uh, person in your position dropped the ball and it wasn't posted properly. So at this time, I'll also be saying no, that way we can at least have this item posted properly like it should have been the first time around.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
No.
Motion fails one and four.
What are the next steps?
So before we move on, if the council's wish is to treat this as land that needs to be classified as surplus, and we move through the process of having you essentially do the same thing you did last year. We can bring that item before council, you can approve it, um, in that fashion, and we would move forward with the posting on HCD. It just means that it will, we will have to wait ninety days before the city can negotiate with anyone that's not an affordable housing developer. They have to have the opportunity first to offer, to make an offer. Um, and then if you don't receive an offer from an affordable housing developer, then you can now put up to the general market. So that, that is essentially what, uh, we would be doing, and we will bring that item for your consideration in that a future meeting.
Okay, I just want to make one comment, I voted no because not you, but whoever was in your position or whoever was before dropped the ball, seems to be something that we needed to resolve. And, you know, together we can make that change, so that's the only reason why I voted no. So in essence, Doug and staff will be bringing this item back.
Yes, sir, but a question was for the attorney that cancels our closed session.
That cancels our closed session? Does it?
No, all of them.
Well, definitely not the second one. Um, at this point, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have three public hearings.
You have number nine, you have number nine.
Did I skip number nine?
You have number nine still.
I'm so sorry, just seems like I want to get out of here faster than I thought I did. Okay, item number nine, who pulled item number nine?
I did.
Mr. Pratt, you would have been upset, wouldn't you?
Uh, Dave Pratt is serious. Uh, I under, this is more information than anything that we approved the project, but I, I don't see anything on here what, uh, what the series is doing. It was talking about other cities and I'd like, uh, I'd like sometime in this council to find out when that projects are on our platform and stuff is actually going to begin. And not only that, these projects, um, sponsored by Measure L money is supposed to be posted as such and it's not. I would like to know when that's going to happen. All I see is a fancy fencer drawing a lot of, uh, weed, high weeds and stuff on the other, other side. And that's it.
You're saying that some things on Measure L are not posted on the website, on our website?
There, there should be a sign posted at the, at the site.
Oh, yes, I misunderstood.
Not just on.
I misunderstood. Okay.
Not just on your website. There's supposed to be an actual sign.
On the project.
At the project.
That's correct. Doug?
So any idea when this project's going to actually start?
So this is not a material project for us. Basically, it's coming through the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission. They're still planning on, I think, breaking ground for the station sometime in December or finishing the station sometime around 2026. What the city is involved in this and why you see no money or funds coming out of this is our supporters are going after a grant. It's just that we're supporting them and getting a grant. All they need is our support. That's the reason for this. And we do have somebody on the Zoom that would like to speak if you want a representative for San Joaquin Rail Commission on there.
I know when I go to those meetings and there's ones coming up in a couple of weeks, I'm going to ask them a bunch of questions at that time. Find out what's, what everything's going on and, and basically, I'm still trying to figure out the plat, uh, the walkway is supposed to have been on, on the, on the off ramp coming off the, off the southbound freeway. But when they, when they did all that construction, they got a walkway on the, on the on ramp going south, going across there. And so basically they're doing this project twice. If, if that's correct, that it's supposed to be on, on the off ramp instead of the on ramp. And not only that, I see they've got fancy color, they painted all that stuff. So if that's true, that means that they got to tear up all that work they did and redo it.
So the on ramps that you're talking about where they painted it, that's not where their sidewalks coming through. The sidewalk's coming through. Nothing's changed from the original design and stuff. It's still coming through the off ramp. Southbound 89 to Whitmore, sir.
Yeah, well, whoever who, who did the work, they should have been told in the beginning instead of, like I said, they got to do the, do the project twice because they concreted the side of the hill underneath the bridges. But there's no cross, no walkway or any type of walkway going, uh, going across to where the, the platform's supposed to be going.
Your career.
They did put a plat, a walkway on, on, on the other side where it's not supposed to be.
They're working with Caltrans on developing the stations. Uh, we're, they're, they're coming to us with a plan, sir. We're not in charge of that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Seeing none? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. The council has any comments or questions? If not?
Move to approve item nine of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving to the first public hearing.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Before we move to public hearings, can I, uh, request a 10 minute recess, please, sir?
You actually read my mind. We'll be now going to a five minute recess. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. Item number 10, a waiver of the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2024 XXX, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Series, amending Title 15 of the City of Series Municipal Code and adopting by reference to California Code of Regulations Title 24, 2022 edition of the California Building Standards Code and to set a public hearing on July 22nd, 2024 for a second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a follow-up item to what we heard previously. We, um, need to adopt an update to the California Building Code. We would be adopting the 22, 2022 California Building Code. And this ordinance just allows us to be up to date. Whether or not we make this adoption, we have to hold builders to that new standard and it just allows us by, by adopting the updated code, we're avail, able to avail ourselves of any, um, modification or amendments without this, we can't. So it's in our best interest to adopt it. This is the second reading to do so.
Okay, thank you, Leah. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers or attending via Zoom that would like to comment on this item? Did you receive any emails?
No, I did not.
With that being said, the public hearing is now closed and we'll bring this item back to council for discussion, questions and action. Counselor, is there any questions or comments? Seeing none? Motion?
Move to approve number 10. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes, but I just asked if we could update the building code, which we should be doing annually. Can we start getting it earlier in the year with proper notices? That's all I ask. But yes, I would obviously want to update our building code to be in compliance with the law.
It would, it would have to be cons- That would be a consensus request, right, Dubia? I don't know. I didn't understand the question either.
Not updated yearly, so we can't update it yearly. It's updated every three years. We should just be more timely with our update. We should have adopted the 2022. On January 1st of 2023, it would have been in effect. The next time they update the code for 2025, we will then update it and adopt it.
We will make sure that whenever updates are necessary or if staff determines that they need changes to the code, there's sufficient lead of time to work with, with interested parties.
Yeah, thank you. Cause we're like eight months or seven months past.
There was a motion and we are now on roll call.
Council, Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Yeah, I said yes. Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number 11, ordinance number 2024 XXX, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Series admitting Title V, Chapter 18 Garage Sales of the City of Series Municipal Code to increase the number of garage sales events to three per year and no limit number of sales days to three per garage sale event. This also goes to Leah.
Thank you, Mayor. So there has been a history with garage sales. Um, just a quick recap, in August of 2023, a member of the republic asked this council to consider increasing the number of yard sales from two sales per year to three sales per year. During council referrals, councilmember Vera requested that staff also consider a citywide garage sale. On that, the October 9th, 2023 meeting, councilmember Vera again made a referral to discuss a community wide garage, uh, garage sale. Um, in January of 24, your former community development director brought the item, but then if you watch the video, it got a little convoluted when the subject of seller's permit came up. So direction again was to come back, clear up some items on a seller's permit and then bring back a discussion or a recommendation on a community wide garage sale. So that then came to me when I joined the city. So I reviewed the existing, I want to go over our existing garage sale requirements, um, for the city of Series. We do not have a community wide garage sale. The number of garage sales a year can be two per a 12 month period. That is not a calendar year, current is 12 month period. You can either purchase a garage sale permit for three consecutive days or two consecutive weekends, Saturday, Sunday. So you also have to have those two garage sales two, four months apart. Um, the hours are restricted in our code to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM and total selling days. So if you purchase two, three day permits, you in theory could have a garage sale for six days out of the year. If you purchase two, two consecutive weekend permits, you could then have eight days of garage sales. Um, is a permit required? And yes, and it would be a total, each permit costs $5. But then in contemplating, do we need a community wide garage sale? What are other cities in the county doing? So you'll notice in the staff report, I kind of did a summary of all the cities in Santa Claus County plus Santa Claus County. And you'll notice we were on the higher end of available sale days. Um, the closest two cities were Newman and Oakdale that had nine calendar days. We were at eight. The lowest was the city of Waterford who allowed one sale for three consecutive days. And the only city that required a time limit between the two was Houston, which required, uh, 90 days or three months in between each sales. So when comparing our codes, we're really right, right where all of the other cities in the county are. Um, the two communities that offer, uh, community garage sales would be Houston and Wat, uh, Houston and Patterson. Sherlock does have a community garage sale, um, statute in their code, but in discussions with their staff, we haven't done one in about eight years. Um, I know there's been discussion that potentially Modesta was in conversations with Tristan, their planning manager. They do not have a formal community garage sale, so there may be one that is informally, so promoted on social media, but the city does not, they don't charge for their garage sale permit. So then the notion of a free one, they don't really need it because they're not charging. You can just have two per year. So in considering the community garage sale and the staff time needed to go into that, staff doesn't feel we need a community garage sale. We have the opportunity for people to have eight sale days a year. Um, but we do want to take in the requests of the community and we thought, well, we could increase it to nine sales days a year. Then that would put us at the maximum number of sales days as our counterparts in the county, the other two cities that have nine sales days. Um, the reasoning behind the limit is you really have to, the code outlines the purpose of a garage sale and it's not to turn residential zones into commercial zones. It's not to make commercial enterprises out of these bargain sales. They're meant to happen infrequently because people don't have seller's permits typically to do that. And so I don't want to get into the seller's permit discussion yet. Let me, I'll finish the garage sale discussion first. Um, so our code identifies the, the, um, the reason we want to not create, make them into this, really this commercial venture. Um, we don't give them business licenses. If you keep allowing people to sell things out of their home, I, I believe one of the comments at a prior council meeting was that give people opportunity to sell their stuff. And I think nine days is a lot of opportunities a year to sell your stuff. We don't want to verge on the, uh, realm of becoming, you know, a wholesaler of other people's items. Our code explicitly prohibits you to resell things. It's just supposed to be stuff that comes from your home or garage. And. We felt you could do that. We also took into consideration the cost of these permits. We're not really making a profit. It costs about the, we made, had six hundred and seven permits in the fiscal year. A total of a little over three thousand dollars. In doing the math, you know, we took an hourly rate of staff, their, their weighted hourly rate with benefits. You figure they spend five to 10 minutes on each permit at six hundred and seven permits a year. They're, they're spending. If it at the max time, because all. You have to, the way our permits are written, you could do it in a twelve month period. So that means someone at the calendar has to find when Suzie. Purchased her first garage sale and then find when her next four month period would be. Everyone's not on a January to December schedule. So it takes staff time. They have it on a list on an Excel sheet upfront. I was shocked that. Wasn't. Or, you know, digital, but it's not. So it takes staff time, probably five to 10 minutes to issue a garage sale permit and, and at a weighted hour. That's a cost of about six thousand dollars a year. We're not in any way recouping those costs. And now we're adding another day of sales. So more time is going to be spent. But we want to accommodate our. Residents. So we're now, we've suggested allowing another garage sale day. We've eliminated the time period in between each sale. So I know there was some concern given the time, like if you had your garage sale in November, you had to wait four months and you might be in rainy season. Your garage sale gets, you know, rained out. And now you gotta, you know, you waited that long because we had to and you could have missed some really great weather days. So we've eliminated the, the wait time in between. So we allow people to now have another sales day. You don't have to wait the four months. You could have it. In a row, three weekends in a row, or pick only the great weather months. You don't have to worry about being rained out. Or if it's too cold, no one wants to come out. But we think that doing that kind of accomplishes the requests of the public. And it's interesting, our finance staff who does run the permit noticed that there's an uptick in sales around, you know, February. Christmas, people tend to sell fresh flowers at their garage sales, right? You're not allowed to do that. It's really supposed to be only things that you have in your home. You're not reselling. So. We know that there's instances where people are taking advantage of our garage sales. So. We're not going to not accommodate those good people who have good behavior. We want to give them that extra sale. Address those needs without, you know, opening ourselves up to having more code enforcement issues or having to really monitor our people. Kind of do other things at that. You want me to address the seller's permit issue or does that kind of convolute the issue? I can, I can bring that up.
Dubia, does that have anything to do with the ordinance?
It was something that the council requested additional information on. And so there's very helpful information in the staff report, but we can present it to you if you want further detail. And it might actually be helpful for the public. Because it's not information that's intuitive and it did require a little bit of digging and working with, with the state agency. So that would be helpful.
So I'm not entirely sure how the connection was even made, that if you sell a certain amount of times a year, you have to get what's known as a seller's permit. The state of California tax board. Requires that if you sell more than two days a year. You need a seller's permit. They are free. You go onto the state's website, you'll notice that they exempt garage sales, but their exemption only applies to two days. So. We have a garage sale that could last for three days. Technically. After your second day of sales, you are triggering the need for a seller's permit. What I found interesting, if you look at the chart, most cities limit their garage sales to two days. And I thought, hmm, did somebody know that after two days of sale, you're triggering this need to pay. Taxes on those, that those sales. But I called several cities and I said, look, I want to know if you know the history behind the seller's permit and your. Garage sale days. Was there any connection when this ordinance was created? Is that why you limited it to two sales days? Nobody knew what I was talking about. So. I don't think that. You know. It has anything to do with how many garage sale days we have. I called the tax and the Department of Tax and Fee Administration. Call, anybody can call and I ask the questions, you know. As a sale, you, you talk about sales. Does it constitute one day or sale that has multiple days? And they said that each day of a sale is considered a day of sale under the state of California. And once you've exceeded two days of sale. You technically need a seller's permit. If you sell items on Facebook Marketplace and you sell a. Baby bouncer one day and a couch the next day, and then you want to sell your dining room table, you technically have triggered the need for a seller's permit. We don't have to regulate that, like we, we the city don't tell people to pay their taxes. It's just something that a person, a wholesaler knows when you sell on Etsy, you pay taxes through Etsy. When you sell on other maker platforms, I think Venmo, there's a new rule that they start charging taxes. People, you know, the state's gotten savvy to how people are kind of. Making purchases without providing the sales tax that they need to provide and they're putting. Restrictions on that. So this restriction exists. We aren't under any obligation according to the state to say, hey. Rule. I added a line to our ordinance that suggests, you know, you must adhere to seller permit laws, but nothing we have to enforce. It's just that something as a taxpayer need to know, you know, you know, you need to pay your taxes every year, April fifteenth. Business owners know they need to pay and report their income taxes on their businesses. If you intend to engage in sales. At some point you need to pay the state their income. That sales tax. It also is a benefit to the city, which is why we don't want to add, you know, allow a plethora of. Garage sales because we are, we the city are taking away sales tax from ourselves because those people aren't going to businesses. They're going to their neighbor and then no sales tax is captured. So I hope that covers the sales permit issue. And answer questions, but we, the number of days that we have for sales. We don't need to make it dependent upon that seller's permit regulation. It exists. People are subject to it. Whether they do or don't obtain that permit is up to them.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers or attending via Zoom that would like to make a comment on this item?
In nineteen seventy five, well, before that, about nineteen seventy one, my husband quit his job at Del Monte Can Company. We went into the business of flea markets. And selling at flea markets and fairs. It was very lucrative and we did very well. And over a period of time, we started having yard sales. And some of the rules she's talking about are correct and some are not. First of all, there's no law in California against yard sales whatsoever. We used part of our yard sales to sell off merchandise that had not sold at the flea markets or the fairs. We had a seller's permit, but if you didn't, you only needed a temporary seller's permit. It's only after a certain amount of days and a certain amount of sales. And the Board of Equalization never forgives the sales tax for anything. So that's the only thing they're concerned about. Is their sales tax. But if you check with the Board of Equalization. They will tell you specifically how many days, like. Two yard sales might be considered. A limit, but two yard sales might be three days each yard sale. So you have to, you have to know what you're going to ask before you get the answer you want. So this is a lot more complicated than what she's talking about. And all of my yard sale money, I counted into my sales. And paid the tax on and paid income tax on it. So don't get worried. But there's a lot more questions and it's how you ask the question, you get the answer you want. But a three day sale, three times a year would be good for the city. That would help the people here. To pay bills and things that they need to do. People complain about too many yard sales. It's very easy. If they don't have a permit, shut them down. If they have too many, fine them. If you're, if you're going to have a law, enforce it or don't have a law.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Amy.
Yekli, you're on the roll today, sir.
Yes, following up on the yard sales. I started all this last year. I think it was August or something like that. But thank you all for having it back on the agenda. I agree with a lot of what you said, which is nice. And I second that three yard sales a year. And we pick. Right now it's every six months. We get a permit to have a yard sale. You're quoting four months. But because of the weather, because. You know, it rains in December and January and November or whatever, let us pick what days we want to have our yard sale. Instead of every six or every four months. That way we can just get it all the way throughout the year, within a twelve month period, but not have a specific month. You know, have it every two months if we wanted. You know, let us pick what days we want to have the yard sales instead of every six or every four months. Right?
We're proposing to eliminate the distance between.
Nice.
There is no, there is no.
Okay.
Three weekends in a row.
Yeah. Or thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
On Warren City of Series, I think adding the third. Sales event for a total of nine days. Is a good thing. And having no requirements. I mean, you can have them all in one month if you want to. But I do believe the city does need to make a comment or a. Notice that after the second day of sales. The person is required to obtain the seller's permit. I really think most citizens out there don't realize that. And that information would be helpful. I don't think it's the city's responsibility to follow up and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to. The R S chases a lot of people around when they don't meet their deadline on April the fifteenth. But series doesn't need to do that. They just need to notify the person that after that second day of sales that they need to have a seller's permit.
Anybody else? Mr. Yekli.
Unique series. I think it all comes down to. What she said, it's a pretty good idea, but then it, it comes down to. E J Johnson. And a group that he works with and enforcement. I don't think there's any way possible that that can be enforced because. If you lived here in series long enough, you know, there's some people that go by the rules and there's, there's ones that abuse it. And. You know, I think we all go down the street and we wonder, wow, didn't they have one there and there and there? And they go. What have they got a permit? And what's those signs doing on city? Property, you know, there's signs in the. I'll get to that later on. They got signs on the pole for that city property and go on to the office over there for a permit, even though it's minute. The young lady there told me that it's all in Spanish, it's all in English. You know, maybe we have to put in other ones or translate or call somebody to translate, but they all sign something saying that they won't do certain things. Well, some people don't believe that. It comes back to what I believe is that when people own a home or they rent a home. They think that's their first piece of the rock and they can do whatever they want to. City ordinance is or whatever, it doesn't apply to them. That's a very small group, but we see those groups out there and enforcement. If you can enforce that, it's fine. But when people write their name and say they agreed to something, it'd be just like being in court, you know, when the. You tell the, the judge, I didn't know, and they slap your hand. The judge's not going to do that. He's going to say, as I've said before, ignorance of the law. So a lot of these people here in town, they're very smart. But they think they don't have to do certain things. And again, the code is more or less our code to the city, the different ones. And that's ignorance of law and they should comply with that. When they don't. All the signs and stuff out there and, you know, I don't know if code enforcement takes them down or what. But it's a, it's terrible to see all that stuff. It's almost like that field that. Casey was talking about, you know, we need to clean this place up, you know, we had a beautification committee at some time back. What was that all about? Nothing ever really transpired from that. But the city our size, we shouldn't have the issues that we have, especially with, you know, sign postings and all this other stuff and. And it's just ridiculous what goes on. We shouldn't be where we're at today in these particular areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Any, any emails?
No emails received.
Hands raised on Zoom.
And no hands raised.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed. I bring this item back for council for discussion, questions and actions. Councilmember Rose Linda, your button has been pressed.
Guess I'm kind of mixed on this. I'm a little confused because originally I was thinking. One day, so kind of more of bringing people into the city. But Estha just did a garage fest, which was April twentieth, twenty twenty four, sponsored through the visit Modesto. They have one per year. It was free. It was marketed. They had vendors. They had a lot of people come out because people will go out. If I knew Modesto. For example, had the two hundred and ten yard sales, you better believe I was going to be there and I was going to be buying lunch over there in Modesto as well because. Two hundred and ten is going to take me a little while to get through. So with that said, I think part of it was one, bringing people into the city to vote, education to the actual policies. Letting them know that they're supposed to get a permit that this one on for Modesto was April twentieth. And it's free. If you want another one, you're going to have to pay for it. So. I think that was kind of initially was the point. All their addresses were posted on the website. So you were actually able to get through the town. I obviously put gas in because two hundred and ten again takes a little bit of time. And I had lunch and I think that was kind of the point. If you, and they kind of eliminate staff time too. So staff isn't doing permits year round or free permit year round. They're only doing it one week out of the year. For one event, once a year, we know that's going to happen. And that was kind of the point. I guess I'm open to possibly considering this new proposal, but I, I think the whole point was that it was going to be a, a community garage sale. We're going to unify. Unite together and it was only going to happen one time. Signs are going to be posted up on city walls. The city polls year round, although they may still be there, but it wouldn't be for the free community yard sale. And which would just be one day. So it would only dramatically affect the city just once a year. And originally that was the whole purpose of the proposal moving forward. But I'm open to listen to what everyone else has to say about this.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
First of all, Leah and your staff. Thank you for all that work, research you've done. Clearly you took this serious. And I support all of the changes that you're, you're talking about in municipal code. However. Honestly, that really has nothing to do with what we talked about for a citywide yard sale. We, we were using, I spoke vehemently about this. A garage sale yard sale as an opportunity for our community. To come together and neighborhoods to come together, meet their friends, meet their neighbors, maybe have block parties, maybe at the end of the day have. Have. Barbecues and whatever. So think of this more of a community event. Than a citywide yard sale. It just happens to be based around a yard sale. Our intentions when we talked about this and their support for this already on the council, by the way. Was no fees, no permits. A Friday or a Friday and a Saturday or a Saturday where anybody in series could have a yard sale. It does not affect their number of yard sales. That we're going to probably change in the code or how it is written now. Everybody can have a yard sale, no permit, very little staff. My, my idea would be to put a link on the city website. Ask people through social media to go in, put their address in. And then a link also on the city website of a map or a list of where those are. That's pretty much it. One day or two days, anybody can do it. It's free. They don't have to contact the city for a permit. They'll, they can meet their neighbors. They can bring people into the community, have a barbecue, whatever they want to do. It's been brought up about code enforcement issues post sale, what's going to happen to all this stuff. We already talked about this as well. The city sponsors. Huge events where people can take their extra stuff and get rid of it. So does the county and supervisor Condit has a couple of year. It would take a little bit of work to make sure that one of those was the day after we do this community yard sale. So people that had extra stuff aren't going to leave it out, create a nuisance for the rest of the city and work for code enforcement. This is not that difficult to do. I believe that we can do that and I'm going to ask for this to be placed back on a future agenda. As a community wide yard sale. That doesn't have anything to do with what our code says and what we may or may not change tonight. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Martinez.
Actually, Dubia, I do have a question for you before I make my statement. We could make a motion to accept it with the addition of the third day. But add the community yard sale event, right? Because in the staff report, it's, it's listed, it has a possibility, but it's recommended at this time. We don't do it.
You can codify the community event. So you can.
You can codify the community event. So you could add it to the code if you want to.
Yeah. So I just want to sort of piggyback off of what Vice Mayor Silveira and Councilmember Vieira said. The, the whole point of this was to make it a community event, to bring everyone together, to have people come to the city. Like Brett said, have shared on social media, have people register, get a map created, put it online, share in the courier. A week before the event, let the courier put it on the front page since a lot of people in our community still do religiously read that, that paper. So find a way to get the information out. So that, that would be my recommendation is that we accept the ordinance as written, but add, adding a community event to it.
What, what about the details? I know everybody has different requests. Should we bring it back with additional details in regards to everybody's request here?
Leah, before you answer that, because it got so convoluted last time and we ended up where we are now, is why I think it, let's, let's work on what we have, the code says now and possibly those changes. And then literally maybe the next meeting start over completely with a new subject, a new agenda item of a community wide yard sale, community event. That's why I think maybe right now it's best to separate the two. That doesn't mean we have to. I just think because of the way it got so convoluted last time, like she said, let's just try to try to keep these two separate.
Just a quick question to Brett's point, even if we codify it today, it still needs to be brought back. And it would be best that we codify it to support the idea and have it in the ordinance. Yes or no?
If you make changes to this code today, we can add that language in and bring it back to you for second reading and everything will be.
Second reading.
Second reading and it will be wrapped up. Otherwise, you could, we could scrap this and start again because we basically have to do that to renotice it. Or we could do what you're suggesting, what the vice mayor is suggesting, which is just process this ordinance and then have a discussion about the ins and outs of.
About the details.
About the details. In, in a separate ordinance, it's really up to the council's desire which way you want.
It will be set in stone if we, if we pass this today and bring a second reading back with all the details?
I guess, Nubia, can I just interject one second because the Bresto mention in visitors bureau puts on that I would like, I would like the council to consider the changes to the code and then consider the community wide event, less as a code thing, but more as an event like the balloon, air balloon, like an event that those events aren't codified in the code. Can we make these code changes for the public that have requested extra actual garage sales and then consider the community wide garage sale like an event? And then, sorry Joey, but direct it to our event staff. It's not necessarily a code thing. It's more of an event. This is an event put on a, a different organization or you, you know, it's like you're asking us to consider a citywide event. That's not necessarily part of the code, whereas these are actual codified code changes we need to make. That makes sense.
I'm going to make a motion.
As long as it makes sense legally to this.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the ordinance twenty twenty-four dash or Drupal X. An ordinance of the city council, the city series amending title five, chapter eighteen of garage sales to the city municipal code to increase the number of garage sale events to three per year and limit the number of sale days to three per garage sale event and add a community wide yard sale event as well.
Roll call, please.
Just to clarify, Nubia, so will the, the, the community yard sale, yard sale will be in the municipal code. Is that correct?
With the motion that's been presented right now, we will draft the language to, for second reading to be included. And yes, it will have, what I am hearing is one community yard sale event a year. Okay. At no cost. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Councilmember Casey?
We're bringing it back. Yes.
For the details, yes.
It would come back.
Yes.
Councilmember, it will come back irrespective. This motion just adds that additional component.
We had a first and a second. I know. Member Martinez, okay. Councilmember Casey?
Yeah, he said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Vieira?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Series, adding chapter twenty-five murals of the title five business license and regulations to the series municipal code regarding murals, their locations and design. And this is being presented by our city manager, Doug.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the city currently has no provision in the municipal code to deal with murals. Under title twenty-six, chapter eighteen of zoning code, it talks about signs, but just says nothing about murals. And so we need to look at that and somehow start regulating. This is what we're trying to do. So regulated murals is necessary to prevent damage to the city's aesthetics, looks and appeal and protect public safety. The proposed ordinance establishes content neutral standards and compliance with the first amendment and ensures that mural project permits are assessed with standardized criteria. The proposed ordinance distinguishes murals from commercial speech and the latter, which may be regulated by a greater degree under the first amendment. The proposed ordinance establishes a procedure for the application and approval of mural projects. The mural project process ensures that mural construction complies with the ordinance's location and design requirements for murals and requires authorization. The city council authority, we're looking at for the project is going to, they're going to have to, the council is going to have to set fees for these projects and from time to time adjust those fees. So right now I don't believe we're in that process right now. This is just to prove the actual policy. So the existing policy ordinance will further the city's strategic plan by creating a more livable community through murals. And we've seen what can happen if we don't control those murals. And that was on the smoke shop when we had various designs on that that were not approved or payable to the city. And so that's why I'm asking tonight for the council to pass the ordinance and make murals part of a project that we can make sure they're presentable and contain any negativity they may present and reserve the aesthetics of the city.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers or attending via Zoom that would like to make a comment on this item? Any hands raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Any emails?
And no emails received.
Bring this back to council. Were any comments, discussions or questions? Oh, Councilmember Martina, I was up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, would there be a, a fee study needed to, to figure out and set the, the guidelines for the fees? Or would you look at data from other cities that do? I know Brest has a lot of murals. Do they, they charge these fees already? How would we get that?
We can look at other cities ironically, our, our user regulatory fee, which will be coming here on the, I think, presented to the council here very shortly. We can include that in that fee status coming toward you.
Okay, so that could still be, we still have enough time that could be put in there. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a practice of waving second public hearings, second readings. I, I think that even the first time, we, we need to have more input, something like this, the murals and, and so I, I think that we need at least have another public hearing to have better, better way of communicating with the public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments and or questions? If not, looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number twelve.
A second. We get a roll call?
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vieira?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
With angst, my vote is yes. I caution the city getting into the mural business.
That is.
With angst.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Moving on to discussion items. Amending the Bertolati franchise agreement related to the leaf and limb program. This was a referral by Councilmember Martinez. Doug will once again present staff report. And then we'll open it up to Mr. Martinez afterwards.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Martinez made the referral back in, I believe, January of twenty-three. And so I.
So that was previous you.
Yes. And so he's been very patient about this, and so we want to bring this forward. And I'll let Councilmember Martinez take it over from here of why he wants to change this.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I did bring this up quite a while ago. As you drive through the city, you'll realize like Mr. Warren, I believe, spoke about January ninth is not enough time for people or people don't know the proper bend day, when their tree needs to be out. And so you're driving around in February and March and April. And still in some roads in our city in July, there are still Christmas trees waiting to be picked up. That's why I brought this back. That, and then when you drive around now, springtime is over. We're, we're clearly in to summer with the immense heat we've had these last few weeks, but people do trim their trees. They do cut their yards, do pruning and, and they do need to have that service available in the spring as well. So this is something that definitely needs to be brought back to the table and, and figured out how we can give our ratepayers an opportunity to cut their, their trees and their bushes and put them in their front yard and have them picked up by Bertolati and not face a warning and a hundred dollar fine for trimming their annuals and taking care of the house and making our, our communities look nice. That's why I brought that up.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, the public comment period is now open. Is there anyone in the chambers Zoom that would like to make a comment?
Uh, yeah, Dave Pratt is serious. Uh, it, it's a continued problem. And, and the only way it was corrected was they had year round pickup. Basically, the problem is you're going to have to go house to house and let all these people know when this is and they can't just put it, just clippings, small clippings and stuff out in the street and expect us, especially when you got a small piles and they expect those big old grabber things on picked up, pick up every, everything. I know a lot of us, when, when do have the street pickup, we go back behind there and clean up what's left. A lot of people don't even do that. I got neighbors that blows everything out in the streets. I've seen them at business too. Everything's blown out the street and let the winds take care of it. But yeah, like I said, like I said, I still, I see piles everywhere as on my walk and that, that's just as minimal part of the city. It's not, and so I can imagine what the whole city is like. Even when I was riding my bike, I've seen the way it was. Some of those piles are there for weeks. And then right now, all those piles I see now, then they're collecting garbage in them too. I wait until when, when they start picking up again.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Warren City of Series. The ARPA funds were authorized to hire some additional people for the code enforcement group to specifically deal with the illegal dumps. I think there was two people that were authorized for that. And I don't know if those people are employed now or what the total complement that you folks have over at code enforcement. So can you remind me of what we have? Because when you look around this city, there are just piles of leaf and limbs at the curbs is just building day in and day out. Even on my street, there's, there's extra piles that are there. And even before the program, you weren't supposed to put brass trimmings in the gutter. You weren't supposed to put palms in the gutter. They wouldn't pick it up. I mean, that's been in place for many, many, many years. So educating the public is like pouring sand down a gopher hole. In, in that regard, I mean, they, they know the rules like Tony mentioned earlier. They've educated and they've educated and they've educated. And at this time, their, their thought process is that the, the people know the rules. They just choose to ignore them because of the lack of enforcement and, and the problem that exists. We either go back to it. And I brought up to Doug before the, the meeting started and I've mentioned it here before. Back in twenty twenty and twenty-one, when this budget process went through with Bertolati, their new contract, there was a two eighteen process to increase the fees that were being charged to the general public. For that process and that two eighteen process is that every month, each citizen of the eleven thousand homes plus in this community were charged one dollar per month to be used specifically for illegal dumps. And that's eleven thousand dollars a month and nobody seems to know where that money went and how it's being used. I've asked several times. I brought it up to Doug before the meeting. So the finance department may not be aware of this because she wasn't here at the time. But there's money out there being collected from the citizens every month, and I don't think it's being used properly or as it should be. And I don't think it's up to code enforcement to clean up this city. Code enforcement's job is to mandate to the general public and to the violator that they clean up the city. Code enforcement should not be coming to my yard and cleaning up my yard. They should not be going private property and cleaning up private property. They should require the homeowner to do that or the property owner to do that. Their job is to enforce the code. The people that were hired temporarily with the ARPA funds, their job was to address the illegal dumps. Correct. And they should be doing that if we're still out there and we're still spending ARPA money on those positions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yeakley Series, these particular things have been brought up before and I just can't remember the dollar thing John was talking about and the money. And why is it always the city that has to pay the cost for things? Because if it goes, if this was hypothetically changed, it was a year out collection thing. It would be such a great cost and a loss for the city that, you know, we always emphasize, no matter what department it is, in the city, education, like was said, education here has gone so far that nobody knows what education is anymore. So it seems like a waste of time, you know, we're constantly slapping people's hands and they go, well, I didn't know. I didn't know. Well, you know, on record, some of these people live in the house for years, so all these, they didn't know. I mean, what's wrong with that? But it shouldn't be the responsibility of the city to continue to cater to these people. It's like babysitting, you know? It just happens all the time. You know, somebody's going to do it so you don't have nothing to worry about. We need to stop this and not let go any further. Okay, the way it is, but to give it more leeway, more pickup times through the years is ridiculous. Because that's a cost to the city and we can use whatever money we can get for a good cause, not that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Every two weeks I listen to the Three Stooges call the citizens stupid, dumb, uneducated. It's not nice. If you want this system to work like it's, you want it to work, then have the limb pick up during the season. And in the due time, if there's, if there's limbs out there, have them phone to have it picked up. Or in some way, let the company know that it needs to be picked up. But to continually call the people names and call the city dirty is stupid.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Any emails? Anybody on Zoom? Should I ask that first? That's what I meant to say, actually. Okay, so then we'll go ahead and close the public comment period and I'll bring this back for discussion, questions and direction. And I have two buttons pressed. I'll make, I'll just choose Councilmember Rose Linda Vieira. Would you like to go last? That's no problem, Mr. Vice.
It's before I press the button. Whoever, I can't read this. They pressed the button.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter at this point. Vice Mayor, would you like to go?
Sure. Sam, just a question for you, Sam. As it currently stands, the timeframe that Leaf Limb is paid for by the city basically to pick it up. that leaf limb is paid for by the city basically to pick it up. Why was that timeframe cited on? What caused us to say October to January or whatever it is? What's the history of that?
Vice Mayor, right. You know, you caught me off guard. I have no idea how that how that date was established. This was, this happened way before I started with the bulk works.
Tony, maybe you would know?
I did. The basis of the program, it's the leaf program. And so it's mainly for leaves. All time, that's when the leaves will fall off and it's, that's the main part of the program. There are limbs that are involved, but as somebody mentioned, palm fronds, the brass clippings, none of those are actually permitted aisles ever, and they never have been. So I think the premise was based on just leaf collection. Now, there are, because it is trimmings as well. I mean, it makes sense, you know, to have it twice a year or even year round, but that was, that was the premise behind.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
So I do get, you know, the leaf fall time of the year, but like I have citrus trees, which are springtime trees you would trim. You know, I usually break them up, put them in the green can. There are other things that need to be cut that need to be taken care of at different sections of the year, not just those few winter months. Is it possible to maybe bring it back and look at and every other month instead of year round or view maybe half of the year? Find a way to figure out how to make this feasible so that it's not too expensive for the stadium for the ratepayer? Would make it a resource that would be again accessible to people in the community? Perhaps even, I don't know what it would look like to maybe contact Jilton or Trulock Savage and see what what they charge their ratepayers and how we can figure out a way to maybe bring that to Bertolotti and try and match.
Yeah, yeah, I can contact Bertolotti and, you know, see how we can range this and and I understand they leave in the, in the, you know, in the fall because we're trying to keep all the gutters clean because of all the runoff and everything else. But all the trees usually are pruned in the springtime when they're not, you know, it must susceptible to disease and stuff because it's pushed down instead bringing everything in and getting ready for dormancy. And so I can reach out and talk to Mr. Bertolotti and see how we can make this work. And maybe we have two months in the fall and two months in, you know, spring or something or one and one or something, make it a little more palatable to the citizens here and I can bring that back to the council.
Thank you, sir.
In that communication, can we also talk to Bertolotti and ask about the fee for service part? That way, if somebody wants, needs it done, they pay for it. Not everybody in Series pays for it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions in regards to this direction? Councilmember Vera?
Thank you. Um, I guess originally I was told it was just a matter of changing dates. It doesn't sound like that's what it was now. So I'm a little, I guess my biggest concern and I seem to like Brett's idea because my biggest concern is raising the rates to the taxpayers, especially those that are not going to be utilizing it. I have no trees in my front yard. My neighbors, for the most part, we don't have any trees on my side of town. We're very limited. So the only leaves that I get are the ones that blow into my yard from the park across the street. So I really, so why would I want like a ten to fifteen dollar increase for something that I'm not even utilizing? I've never had to use the front area. Everything fits in my green bin as of now. Maybe one day trees will grow and without water, but right now I take down. So so I guess those are kind of my concerns. I do like Brett's idea where they need it and they're going to be cutting trees. Maybe they just call and do like a bulk or maybe they pay a, you know, whatever the cost is to have it just come and pick up if they do have a sick tree or something in their yard that they do need to trim. But I don't necessarily see raising everyone's tax or utility bill um, to accommodate those that may use it more frequently than the other ones.
To piggyback on that, I live in an HOA and my HOA fees cover landscaping and maintenance. I have nothing to put in the green can except maybe some soil pizza boxes or something twice a year. And I paid for that third can too. So it's just another way to look at it, the people that use the pay for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Vera brings up a question I have. When I didn't have a tree in my front yard, the city came and told me ordinance requires you to have a tree. Is that ordinance not in place anymore?
I, I don't know the tree ordinance offhand to quote that. We, 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 we're getting a bunch of trees and a grant. I don't know.
I'll have to look it up.
Anything else, Councilmember? Okay, so just for clarification, uh, members of the council, just for clarification, so Fallon can write this down. Do you need any more clarification? Are you good? Just want to make sure.
I think because it's a discussion item with direction, it'd be preferable in the form of a motion.
Correct. There, there's several suggestions. So they only, they, they would rather do a consensus. They want to get easy for everybody.
That, that's fine, but it, so, so that we're clear, the direction that staff will look into is to seek ways with the franchise holder to expand the schedule that currently exists and also discuss the idea of of the fee, a fee for the same type of service as an option for additional use. But those were the two things that seemed to be items for council direction.
And no fee increase.
And and focusing on ways to have it, yeah, minimize increases.
So three different things.
Okay, so that, again, the idea, so the idea with the discussion items is that now that we've followed the referral process, it's to give staff more feedback on what they need to spend their time on to maybe bring back something as an action for you. So it's consensus is fine, but
Do you need the actual directions?
For it to be a motion, because again, you're no, so, so we will recurser in a future meeting, we'll be bringing back discussion item on that so that we're all on the same page. But I, I So the important thing is that as long as we at a staff level know what you want, we got it.
So to benefit Fallon, or did you get all this? I know, but you got everything down is what I'm asking. Okay, I just wanted to make sure she has everything down. Okay. Awesome. There it is. Moving on to council referrals. Item number fourteen, reallocating American Rescue Plan Act funds from Costa Field upgrades to public safety retention. Uh, this was my referral. After careful consideration, the remaining ARPA funds will be better allocated for public safety. This is a conversation I had with Diane Martinez since we were instrumental in, and also with the support of the council to upgrade Costa Fields. At the moment, there is a solar power initiative that's possibly on the horizon that would possibly cover the lighting requests. And unfortunately, a hundred K would not cover even one. So so I'll, I'll actually let Mr. Martinez give some little bit more details, but yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we initially gave CYB, the organization, two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding to do large scale improvement products to, to, to Costa Fields, I'm sorry. Uh, they were able to trim trees, add new security features, get new gates installed. They upgraded their restrooms. They renovated all of the fields. They laser leveled, they reseeded, they completely did the irrigation system on all the fields. And with that, they spent about ninety seven thousand, if I'm correct, Joey, around almost that full first hundred thousand dollars. With the remaining hundred thousand, they were looking to improve the lighting structures there. And for one field, it was around seventy six thousand dollars. So it wasn't feasible to use seventy six thousand of the remaining hundred to fix the lighting on one field when it wouldn't benefit everyone, right? Because one age group would reap the, the benefit of that and the other age groups would need to wait until it was their time on those fields. Uh, so with that, the mayor and I discussed finding ways to help do uh, public safety retention, find ways to, to use the ones, allocate them in a different way since that hundred thousand dollars would not be able to completely renovate all the lighting fixtures at CYB.
So we're just looking for consensus from the council and for staff to look at, look at bringing us some information, how that would look.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Do you, what are your ideas? I'm kind of curious because it's not, there's no staff report. What are the ideas for?
So the ideas in, in the sense that we talked about, the retention would possibly be bonuses for staying on for a couple, like a year or two in reference to coming on as a police officer or in any public safety position. It'd be an incentive to stay with us longer. So do we give them bonuses? That's just one idea that was tossed around. I know that Doug had mentioned some other things. He said he would probably bring forward. So it's not just one thing, just a couple of different options. That was primarily my initial thought, that I think that it's, it's better that we put a couple of different ideas on the table, but that was my original, original thought on that retention.
Oh, said you may have some other ideas?
That's your cue.
Yeah, so what, part of it was what he discussed was we're looking at, you know, is say, starting August first of twenty twenty four, if you come on, you know, you stay three years, you get three thousand dollars to try and sometime for retention that way. Uh, we're looking at trying to reach out to the colleges we've talked about before and paying for part of their tuition to get their bachelor's degree and use that to pay for that. And so just different things like that. Uh, July and I've been throwing stuff and get, you know, around and but, you know, spitballing some things, but those are the two that have kind of popped up that we're looking at right now.
And I do have two buttons pressed, by the way, Mr. Jim Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my question is the, the money that's left over, it was part of a recreation program for our youth to, you know, help Costa Field and the youth of Series. My question is, when you discover you had a surplus, did you go to our recreation manager and say, hey, we got some extra money here? Is there someplace that we could use it uh, to benefit the youth in the city of Series?
Actually.
Or did we decide that there's money's left over and we decided, no, police department needs it?
No, there was, there was no decision. Actually, Casey, when I talked to Joey, we talked about the solar power initiative and I don't want to get too detailed in that. But they want more lighting in that facility. So we felt that because of the cost savings, we could possibly use this as a referral for the officer retention, Mr. Casey. So we did have our, our our thoughts and hearts in CYB to try to improve the lighting in addition to, uh, what we had already done, Mr. Casey. Rosalinda?
I'm kind of just thank you, Mayor. Uh, going along with what Mr. Casey has to say regarding the money that was originally appropriated for our youth. Um, when it comes to public safety, I just want to make sure we're looking at equality with staff, especially with the union expressing concerns about making sure we're treating our staff equally. Um, so those bring up a kind of concerns if we're targeting just certain areas and not everyone across the board when it comes to public safety. Um, and possibly other items that we originally cut from the ARPA funds such as cameras and LPRs and other public safety equipment that was requested. Um, but that's kind of where my ideas, thoughts were, and I didn't know exactly where we were going and what we were thinking about on this, but I just want to make sure it's going to benefit the entire city. And then I think if it would go three years, that would not meet the deadline for spending or expenditure requirements.
If we encumber it, and I think we have it till twenty twenty six, oh, we could do it in a shorter difference on two years.
To allocate it. Yeah, that, that's why the, the request is actually public safety retention, Councilmember. Would that satisfy what you're referencing? As across the board versus just one public safety versus dispatchers and are you going to talk about the money now?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that ARPA funds.
Yes.
So the ARPA funds have to be encumbered by December thirty first this year.
That's correct.
And have to be fully spent by December thirty first twenty six. So you would not be able to do something three years out.
It could only be a year if that, if that is the case.
Correct.
Okay, that actually changes it a little bit. Okay, we'll, we'll bring back staff report that looks, that reflects that. Last thing I need is to, that's for losing that, that money.
Is there, Mayor, is there a consensus?
I'm looking, I'll ask for it now from left to right.
And and public comment before.
Yes, absolutely. So I'll, actually what I'll do is I'll, I'll go to public comment before I go for consensus. Any members of the public that would like to make a comment or question?
John Warren, City of Series. That was going to be my comment. The money has to be allocated by this year. This is August, okay? September, October, November. If you were going to have bonuses for people that you might want to hire, those needed to be advertised before the hiring process began. Otherwise, it's unfair to all the other people that weren't offered that that didn't apply for those positions. So spending, hiring it and, and giving somebody a bonus for staying on the job for one or two years, you're going to spend the money by twenty twenty six. That is not a very good way to do that. There's other things that this city needs that that ARPA money should be spent for. And it's coming to the end and you need to encumber that money, like she says, by the end of this year. And of course, it's got to be spent by twenty twenty six. So retention for police officers or dispatchers, those options are long, are long past. That should have been thought of a couple of years ago when this money became available to the city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, I'll, I'll come back for consensus.
Just to clarify, sir, what are we making consensus on?
Wait, to bring back a staff report, correct?
What are the is there consensus from the council to explore?
Reallocating that hundred thousand elsewhere.
Exactly. And, and based off of the input staff has received, we'll include all of those as options to bring back to you.
I'm still a little perplexed or confused exactly what we're
If I may.
Have a look into, I think, because originally I think the comment was for retention, but it looks like it's not going to work. So I would not support looking at a three year retention bonus on the ARPA funds that have to be spent.
If, if I may, Councilmember Vera, I think what we're disguise, discussing is uh, removing that hundred thousand dollars from CYB since they couldn't adequately using it and then finding something else at a later date that we would put that hundred thousand in. Is that correct, Nivea?
Yes, yes. So then to the question then becomes, what are the things that the council, if you're interested in that concept of reallocation of funds? What are the things that you would like staff to explore? What's been presented is the uh, public safety retention, but we've received, there's been additional feedback on, on this item. So again, we need to know what we're looking at. Correct, correct.
I'm, I'm okay with the looking at options for real allocation of the ARPA funds that weren't spent for Costa Fields. Um, I don't, I think I'm still a little unclear exactly on what that was. So I think if we're just looking at just any kind of options, I'm open to that, yes. But if we're narrowing it down to something specific, then no, not at this.
Yeah, the original referral was for officer, I mean, it's to be public safety retention.
Originally was.
But now they were realizing that and it's only one year. We need to refocus, but we do have extra funding that we need to reallocate.
And the council needs to keep in mind also, we're going to have some other funds coming in here. We're going to have to make decisions about very quickly.
Not just, yeah.
Not just these, but this can come up with some ideas for the staff to our, you know, talking amongst ourselves, come with some ideas and how we can spend that and other funds are going to be coming up and bring that back and present it to the council.
I'm going to make a referral about all that, Doug.
Are you, sir?
Oh, it's on the record when we get to referrals.
Okay, then we'll come back with options for the hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Mr. Casey, what did you? No, no, you're, you're, what's consensus, Mr. Casey? He says he's not okay with it.
No.
He's not, he's not for it. Okay. Mr. Martinez, did you press it again, your button?
Vice Mayor, so just clarification, we are giving consensus to allow staff to bring us additional items to use this hundred thousand and removing it from CYB since they cannot adequately spend it. That's the consensus we're looking for?
Yes, yes, the conversation we just had. Okay, thank you very much. So I know that we're now going to go into some more additional referrals. I, I do have a a referral. And this is actually a question that I posed earlier to Doug and the Chief of Police and I don't know if necessarily we need a referral, but this is a
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, I'm Real quick, I'm sorry.
Yes, did I?
You didn't catch your vote or?
It was all of us said yes, and Rosalinda, she said only if.
If it was broader, if, if it was.
Broader, and then that's, it has to be that way anyways. I just want to make sure that we.
Those broader, so.
That we make sure that we, we do refocus that money. I mean, my idea was, it's an idea, but at the same time, that money doesn't need to be reallocated.
Okay, so it passed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, uh, earlier today, I sent an email to Chief Collins and, uh, our city manager. Um, in September, I raised concerns about traffic safety near our schools, uh, particularly in, in Center Valley High School, because that's where I coach. And in that, um, issues included parents blocking intersections during drop-offs and pickup times posing significant risks. The initial result, response involved deploying traffic officers to Center Valley High School, which did alleviate some of the concerns. But my current request is with the school's opening on August fourteenth, I'm requesting increased traffic enforcement during the first three days of the school. This increased presence could aim to set the tone for the safety of our children and focus on the most problematic areas identified previously. But what I'm really looking for is cooperation with the school district. They would be more than likely the ones to point you in the right direction. I can only testify to Series High and Center Valley because that's the pathway, but there's been many residents that have been pointing out those, those different, uh, issues that they've had. Um, in addition to that, I know that we have installed temporary solar powered red LED lights at the corner of Blaker and Hackett. Sam, do you remember if that was during, uh, our last city manager's tenure? This is referral, sir.
Did you, uh, Mayor, did you say Blaker and Hackett?
Yeah, Blaker Road and Hackett, you have that LED stop sign. Is that Blaker and Hackett?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
Do you, do you remember that was a temporary, was that temporary or am I mistaken?
No, the, the, you're talking about the flashing sub sign?
Yeah, was that?
No, that was done, that was done with the roadway improvement on Hack Road.
Okay, so my, my question to that is, how many other locations in the city of Series have stop signs with those LED lights? Because I haven't seen, at least I haven't seen many.
No, I, I believe that's the only intersection.
So what I was thinking is if, and here's the biggest thing, you're, you guys are going to ask where the money come from. But I know that some of our members of the public continuously say that people are wearing these stop signs. Um, sometimes in areas where maybe they don't, well, I, I don't know if they don't see the stop signs, maybe they're ignoring them. But some of these LED, uh, stop signs that I've seen actually does bring your attention. And I don't know if that would be a, a, something that we could probably implement in some sections of our school zones. They won't probably apply to all. Um, but I think that might be something just to look into. It's not an actual formal request. Um, I think that it's important. I mean, at the end of the day, our, our school children are important to everybody. And I know that, uh, our officers are continuously going out there battling this, and a lot of the parents out there are obviously some that are, are not following the rules. So I think that if we do go back to what I first mentioned of doing this the three days when school starts, I think we'll set the tone. But that's my, my request, if you want to call it a referral.
Mayor, um, just so I understand, um, your referral is to increase traffic enforcement the first three days of school, which begins August sixteenth?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, so.
Or drop off and pick up.
So our next council meeting is August twelfth, and that's when this item would have to come back agendized for council consensus.
So that's what I was asking, if that's, if that is even something that is, that we could possibly do with, whether it depends on if Doug and the chief can actually decide that.
We can, we can go ahead, I can talk to the chief, and we can go ahead and look at doing that for that because it's a referral, we can't bring the referral back, get it back to you, get it done for, at the earliest, the second meeting, I think, August twenty six.
Right, and that's why I wanted to kind of get the council's input. Yeah, that's, that, there was an email request. I just wanted the, the council to be aware of that request and what, but, yes, Mr. Chief, do you have a quick questions?
I don't, I don't necessarily know if this has to be a councilized item or anything like that. Um, I, I currently this is something that we, that we do every year anyway. Um, I currently have the traffic sergeant working on a plan for, uh, back to school.
That's great.
Again, aside from Series High and Central Valley, we have twenty-four other schools in the city that we have to also look after uh with a very small traffic unit, as you guys know.
And that's, that was.
So I do have an actual operations plan being put together as we speak um about what the plan of action is to conduct, um, specific enforcement at the different school sites within the city. Um, and I plan to pass that action plan along to you guys. Um, so.
That's great.
It's already in the works, so I don't know how deep in the weeds you need to get on it.
No, not necessarily. I just, I just wanted to, you know, bring that to everybody's attention. I'm coming glad that you're very proactive. And some, you know, obviously I didn't ever asked if you had done that, but yes, well, with that being said, that is the only referral that I have. Um, we'll go ahead and we have two buttons have been pressed. Um, Rosalinda Vera, your button has been pressed.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess my referral, if I don't even know if it's possible, so I'm just bringing it forward. Um, at the job fair, we saw a lot of people, a lot of unemployed people, a lot of unemployed residents. Um, and then we also have the sewer plant where I asked if we can try to work on doing local contractors and local hires. So I didn't know if it was possible to maybe even look into a community workforce training agreement to possibly hire local and allow local citizens, local residents to actually work on maybe some of the smaller projects. I don't know if it's applicable for something our, our city, our size, um, but we do have, um, various agencies here locally that can work, and I know they're using it in Stockton and other community agencies to just kind of keep our employees, our local residents higher and trying to get jobs, especially those right now that are struggling to find employment. Thank you.
Who would that question go to? Okay, she asked a question, or for who would that, who would that question go to? It's kind of broadish.
Yeah, basically, I think, I mean, we could look at it and you, you, you have to look at, you know, there's specific requirements to have somebody work out there. I mean, they can, but I don't know if we have the personnel, or I think we're short on personnel in wastewater right now to even, I'll try to train somebody.
I think what we can do is we can look into the concept, but since it's been added now, it will be now added to the referral.
Correct, yeah.
And then we can have further discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you, because I, I do know that we have the, uh, Valley Building Training Council here in Modesto, and they are working with, I said, other local cities. Um, so I just thought maybe that might be a way to keep local employees busy or employed, especially if we're seeing as many people as we did that came out looking for jobs here in Series. Um, I definitely want to try to hire local and place them in local jobs. Um, not all of them, obviously, would, that wouldn't be feasible, but even if it is a small percentage of the projects that because no matter what, we still have to do prevailing wages. We still have to file and comply with state laws. So I just want to see if maybe that's an option to try to keep our workforce employed here local. Thank you.
Looking for consensus.
There's, we have a referral come back for consensus.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Brett Silver, you have a referral, sir?
Yeah, with the menagerie of confusion that the CARES Act and ARPA has brought all of us, um, there's probably money left over. We know there is. There's been a lot of projects that were under budgeted or never completed, but there's some money out there that hasn't been, we haven't decided what to use it for. I'd like a something on the next agenda on August twelfth that tells us how much money is still available, and then the following meeting uh, a list of things from all the council members that we think we'd like to spend that on. Is there a clearer way that I need to make that referral, Shannon? Basically, we get together, we started talking about during budget meetings, how much money is left? And come up with some different ideas for it. As we know, now we're all of a sudden behind the eight ball on, on telling us, deciding what we're going to spend it on. Um, I'd like to do that quicker rather than later. Thank you.
Yes, so, um, we're currently working on our quarterly reporting for ARPA, and we're in the middle of the audit. Um, so I would kindly suggest maybe we do it the last meeting in August, so we have a little more time to put that together because once we have our, um, quarterly report out, we'll have more of that data gathered.
Well, the next meeting will just be where the referral will come on to the, but, on to the agenda, and that will give us then again the last meeting to do what you're saying. But we need to have it as an actual agenda item under discussions before that happens, so let's see that on the next one, please.
So the August twelfth, since this is a referral being made at the dais, the next, um, council meeting, August twelfth, we'll have your referral listed as well as Rosalinda, um, referral listed for council to give actual consensus for the item. And since, consensus shouldn't be made, um, at the dais, at the time the referral is made. Because then, once we agendize it, we allow it for public comment and people to attend because they know it's going to be on the agenda to speak about.
Sounds good. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had this discussion with city manager, and I just wanted to bring it as a discussion item of looking into becoming a sister city with a, with another city council somewhere else. I don't know what all that entails or how that's possible, but, uh, wanted to see if we could have that as a discussion item come back.
That'd be a good thing.
We'll, uh, we'll bring it back for consensus and move forward then.
Yeah, thank you very much. Is there any additional referrals in the council? Okay, let's try to wrap this thing up. I'm moving on to reports. I do have some reports today. Uh, this past week has been filled with a lot of incredible moments and connections with our amazing community. Here are some, some highlights. As mentioned before, for Juan Alanís's office, he hosted an event that saw a great turnout and meaningful conversations. The public provided valuable recommendations that will assist us in shaping future policies for the city of Series, especially concerning mixed use and affordable housing. Um, I'm sure a lot of you attended the St. Louis County Fair. It was very hot. I had the pleasure of attending the fair while reconnecting with familiar faces, and it's always a joy to see the community come together to celebrate those local traditions. I also attended the Dora Street Community Barbecue. A special shout out to the Dora Street Community for hosting a fantastic barbecue. This is my, uh, fourth year attending this event, and it was wonderful to spend time with great friends like Bubba Jackson, John Thompson, JMo, and their entire amazing family. Obviously, not just steal the, uh, the limelight, but the fire department and the police department were out there. Obviously, they've been doing that for a very long time before I've ever actually knew about the event. And obviously, in my personal opinion, showcasing the commitment to the community and unifying, uh, and safety. Uh, your positive contributions to the neighborhood is truly inspiring. Um, I'll, I'd like to just give a small shout out, celebrating a young man that I coached. Um, he, it was his twentieth birthday, and he is, uh, on his journey to the Air Force, and I just wanted to congratulate Sam Wilson. Uh, one thing I would like to mention is that I will always continue, uh, supporting the youth and the fundraising. Uh, I was inspired by these young people who are raising funds for their cheer and soccer season. Uh, supporting our youth is vital, and I'm grateful to be a part of the community that always comes together. Uh, yesterday was National Ice Cream, uh, Ice Cream Day, and I couldn't think of a better way to celebrate than stopping by one of our local favorites, El Tarasco. Right here in Series, uh, come to find out, they were recently featured in a Good Day Sacramento video segment. Now let's continue to support our local businesses and enjoy some delicious ice cream. I would like to move on to inviting everyone here today. As you've, if you had an opportunity to see, we are, uh, I am holding a military and law enforcement appreciation breakfast. Uh, we are honored to invite you to our military and law enforcement appreciation breakfast. This special event will be dedicated to expression our gratitude to the brave men and women who have served and continue to serve our community and country. The date is July twenty eighth, Sunday at eight AM at Howard Prep. Join us for the morning fellowship, recognizing and appreciation, and join a complimentary breakfast while connecting with fellow veterans and law enforcement officers. Our esteemed speakers will be Assembly Member Juan Alanís, George, George Renta, who is the founder of the Veterans in Action Incorporated, Nicholas Ontario, he's a veteran, and myself, and to share our thoughts and extend our heartfelt thanks. And the proceeds will go to support valuable programs such as Howard Preps, and that is all. City Council, I have, uh, pressed by Mr. Martinez.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a couple of reports. First is our Christmas Tree Lane meeting. Uh, Councilmember Vera and I are on that committee. We're going to be having our second meeting, which will be August first between seven and eight PM. And we're actually pretty excited to announce that that meeting, instead of being held here at the community center, is actually going to be held at, uh, Rocky Fisher Memorial Park, or the awning is where we'll be holding it. So I just wanted to make sure that we announce that and let the people of Christmas Tree Lane know. I know Joey did his due diligence and sent out the information. Um, then I just wanted to recap concerts in the park. Between last council meeting and this council meeting, we did have Savannah Clark and Indian folk dancing played. Uh, we've got two concerts left. Those are going to be the twenty-third and thirtieth, which would be Levine and the Trainwreck. And then we'll end the concerts in the park with Greg Scutter and the Honky Tonk Heroes. Um, then I did want to just touch on two things really quick. Uh, Councilmember Vera and I are doing a back-to-school fundraiser drive for just collecting uh, anything that anyone has to donate. Uh, Councilmember Vera got a bunch of backpacks. This is the second time we've done this, so we, we take whatever school supplies that we can get, and then we go through, uh, some of the underappreciated neighborhoods in our community with police and fire escorts, and we give out these backpacks to children, just as a way to give back. Uh, we'll be doing that again this year. And then last, I did want to thank Sam and his team. I, I did have a, uh, a senior citizen who was living in my district was contacted me about a city tree that was overgrown and growing on her property, and her insurance had threatened to uh, get rid of her policy because of the tree. Uh, so I contacted her, I got her in contact with Sam. Sam, she said you were amazing. You, you were awesome to speak with. You, you handled that perfectly. Uh, and I also want to thank Kenny Vaughn, Cole Bodie, Ray Davis, and Joseph Witt for, for going out there and for helping that senior citizen, taking care of the tree, getting that all taken care of. Uh, the insurance after the tree was trimmed to let her know that they would continue the policy. Um, so she was very appreciative of you, your team, how professional, how communicative you were, so thank you.
Councilmember Rosalinda?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess, Mayor, um, you kind of touched on the Affordable Town Hall meeting, which was on July ninth. It was great success. If you have any questions, please let me know. I still have, like, the forms are still online if you're looking, um, for a discount on utility bills and you qualify. Um, those are online. We're also looking at reviewing the income, I believe. Um, there's also, I also went to the community. There was a town, uh, garden in the community. I attended a town hall at Series Partnership last week regarding steps that would be taken to assist our local families and communities here in Series. It included a visit from Senator Alvarado's Gil and recognizing them for either being what Series Nonprofit of the Year. Um, I also want to thank everyone. That heart clinic with the county was a huge success on July thirteenth. Um, by eight o'clock, we already had a line, and it stayed steady until ten AM. There was no downtime at all for them. Um, I want to thank St. Louis Animal Services for providing that free opportunity for the community and everyone who came out and took advantage of the free clinic. Um, regarding Dara Street, which I was also out with, uh, the mayor, um, I, if you are listening, I have followed up with the mayor or with the city manager regarding trees and see if there is water available. Um, if we do have water and we're not able to get the tree grant to put trees out there, the Guardians, Series Garden Club said they will consider planting flowers in their little medians that they have that is currently a big pile of dirt since the city trees were pulled out several years ago. So I am working on that. I have followed up on that. Um, Daniel, thank you for touching on the Christmas Tree Lane. All the flyers were hand-delivered to every resident. I went to every single house to drop them off. So I'm hoping to have a really good turnout to the August first meeting over at Samaro Park. And regarding the school supplies, um, again, with those, the donated, the backpacks I should have in this week. So hopefully we can move forward and get a date to, um, actually get them distributed. I have been in connection with the Series Unified School District, their homeless program that they have. So that way we can also meet the citizens that also still need backpacks, as well as our homeless community that we have in Series. Um, I am headed to a conference this, later this week, um, for small city strategies and housing strategies, zoning and land use, as well as supporting our unsheltered and using federal funding opportunities and other things. It isn't being paid by the city. I am paying for this, and it was an invitation only for a national conference that's going to be held. Um, and then Daniel touched on concerts at the park, so that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Casey, anything? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, with that being said, city manager?
I have nothing to report, sir.
City attorney? Any of the department heads? That kind of supervisor is not here. Now, as far as the closed sessions, they're both canceled, right?
The first item is canceled.
It's this first item we're still, we're still doing?
Canceled, so, so all, all items are canceled.
Okay, so we will adjourn this meeting to go to closed session? Oh, that was a no? Okay, so I'm, I'm, okay. No closed session, so you guys can all go home, including us. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a blessed day.